Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here. So, we are about to begin the study session. There's one item. Discuss the -- how the 2016 Bicycle Transportation Plan and 2018 Pedestrian Transportation Plan projects have been brought to council for consideration, how currently funded projects are being scheduled for completion, and recommendation of project information and impacts staff is to consider and describe for future funding requests. So, may we have the staff presentation?
Yes, good afternoon. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works, and to my right here I have Michael Zimmerman, our Capital Improvements Program Manager, and in the audience David Stillman, our Transportation Manager. So, this study session was at the request. It occurred back in July 16th, council meeting, when there was a presentation and update on prioritized project list of the adopted 2016 Bike Plan and the 2018 Pedestrian Plan. At that time, a couple of council members had asked that a follow-up discussion occur to assist in better understanding how bike and ped projects are brought to council for consideration. As this process to fund the CIP, Capital Improvement Program, has only -- was only a few months back, there are many examples of how projects follow a typical trajectory of being identified in a master plan, proceeding through an internal project initiation process, review from various commissions, and then finally on to council for consideration. This presentation will briefly cover the typical process, and with more detail, the process that has followed when bike and ped projects come out of turn from the annual capital improvement process. A recent example of a project's taken out of turn include the various Apple-funded projects considered by council this last June, the 18th. This next slide shows how the presentation is going to be organized. And so, I will give a quick review of the master plan process and how projects typically proceed in the annual capital improvement program, which we refer to affectionately as the CIP process. Michael will then get into more detail when discussing the projects that occur when taken out of turn, and will then follow and discuss the factors that affect the schedule of most projects. His presentation will be intentionally light on specific project schedules, as Attachment D to the staff report provides quite a bit of detail. I will then follow Michael to discuss information that will be included in future funding requests, so that full impacts of projects moving forward can be identified. And as sharing information between projects is important to the community, the presentation will wrap up with Terry Gerhart, our GIS Manager, and Adam Araza, Business Systems Analyst of the Innovation Technology Department, showing us a GIS dashboard of the 19 -- well, really even more than that, of our capital CIP-funded projects that have the ability to filter the status, the schedule, funding source, and estimated cost of each project. So, annual consideration of bike and ped projects oftentimes begins with staff through three main methods, not in any particular order or even in isolation of each other. The consideration that occurs may be due to previous direction from council, follow-up need identified in a completed master plan, or community input. These needs are weighted with other potential CIP project needs following similar inputs, for example, from our buildings, our roads, parks, storm drains, to name just a few. Staff considers all the inputs, and then looks at the logistics of available resources that include budget and staffing. As this is intended to be a review of this process, let's start with a brief overview of the master plan process. So, this is a schematic -- hold on here. Pages are stuck together. So, this is a schematic of that process that resulted in both the 2016 Bike Plan and 2018 Ped Master Plan. And as you can see here on the slide, and we went over this with council back in Ju -- in July, on the different inputs that were weighted as these master plans were constructed. So, I'm not going to go into this again, but just to show it again as reference. And you can see the different inputs that come in, whether it is from the bike. The BPC is the Bike Pedestrian Commission. They have input into the master plan. Community input occurs in the master plan creation of it, and again through the Bike-Ped Commission, and then ultimately when it goes to council for adoption of that master plan. And then in the lower right, you can see where these plans are recommended to be updated at least every five years. And as our one plan is back in 2016, we're going to begin that process next year with the Bike Plan, and we see some real synergy in putting both the Bike and the Ped Plan together as one document as we update those plans. I'll let Michael now talk about the project initiation form here. Just go ahead, Michael.
So, projects that come out of the adopted master plans, the highest-ranked projects will then be proposed as a project -- through a project initiation form process. The projects could be either single standalone projects, basically a single discrete project like Linda Vista Trail, or they can be formed as from an aggregate number of improvements, like the Bike Boulevard projects, or the school walk audit implementation projects. The proposed projects are then evaluated based on a variety of inputs such as available funding, so if it has funding, it has a higher likelihood to be moved forward. Can we leverage grants and donations? Again, the more we can have external funding, the higher ranked the project becomes. Is it a council priority? If it was a stated priority through the council work plan, it also gets a higher ranking. If it's a higher-ranked project in an adopted master plan, again, it also moves forward to the top of the list. Some of the other things we consider is how quickly the project can be implemented. So, if it has right-of-way requirements, that's usually a time-consuming process, so it ranks a little bit lower. If we know that there's going to be difficult -- difficulties in getting permitting or environmental clearance, that again factors into the decision of where it ranks. Is there public support for the project, or is there extensive utility relocation that needs to take place? Those all factor into whether or not the project ranks higher or lower. These projects are then reviewed by the CIP Section and the Public Works Senior Management, and we develop a recommended funding list, or recommended for funding project list. So, once we have the recommended funding list, we go through a series of reviews and refinements, starting with the department head review. It's at this stage that all the department heads get together, they review the project list, they concur, or they revise the recommended priorities. We get input from finance department on whether or not we can afford all the projects that are on the list, and we make the appropriate changes as necessary. This list is then presented to the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission to get their input and to get their rankings. Once the BPC recommends -- recommendations are considered and incorporated into the revised plan, we present this to the city manager for her review and approval. City Manager, once she finishes her review, we consider this to be the proposed CIP, and we present this to the Planning Commission. Now, the Planning Commission's review is only for general plan conformance, and just to make sure that we're consistent with the general plan recommendations. The proposed CIP then moves on to the council. We hold a study session annually, usually in May, and this is where we gather public input on the plan and receive council direction on the priorities that are stated in the plan. Based on the direction we receive and the input we receive from the community, we revise the proposed CIP, and we return in June to get council adoption of the CIP. So, what I've just described is the normal CIP process. But throughout the year, the projects come up, or we -- projects come up outside the normal budget cycle, and we'd like to take advantage of those opportunities when they arise. So, an example of what could trigger something that's taken out of cycle, somebody offers us a grant or donation, we receive council direction to study something, or to consider a project. Maybe there's an opportunity to take advantage of right-of-way acquisition, somebody else donates some land, or we have an opportunity to purchase some land, or, you know, basically secure it through a development agreement. There's also an opportunity when there's a -- we get regulatory approval, that that moves a project forward. So, we start considering that out of the normal budget cycle to take advantage of that So, staff takes all these projects into consideration, and we present this to council on a case-by-case basis as opportunities present themselves. And this is the typical flow chart. We basically, depending on the inputs we receive, we evaluate the proposal, run it by the Bike-Ped Commission, receive community input, and then present it to the council for consideration. When we do go to council, what would be included in the request not only is a description of the scope and estimated cost, but we'd also have a delivery schedule attached to the proposal, and a statement explaining the project impact to the currently approved priority list. So, you'll know if it's bumping any other project that was previously approved, or you'll know if we can accommodate that new project within the current workload.
Yeah, and that's describing our recommendations going forward, that we include that type of information.
So, what we've done recently is we've scheduled out the 19 currently active bike-ped projects. That's shown in Attachment D of your staff report.
I think he's switching it over to the overhead over here. We'll see if it comes up.
So, this is an example of what we're talking about. We've laid out all 19 projects by phase, so you can see where they are in the process of being completed. The major takeaway here is we have 19 projects currently active, so it's not -- we don't take the projects sequentially. We actually work on multiple projects simultaneously. So, when, for instance, if the designer or the design consultant is off doing his work, we will switch to the second project and move that one forward. If we run into an obstacle such as utility coordination and coordinating with PGE and trying to get that resolved, we'll switch to another project and push that one forward. So, whenever we can take advantage of basically downtime or slack time, we'll move to another project. So, it's beneficial and efficient to keep multiple projects going simultaneously. And then, once the project goes to construction, we have a contract construction management firm that manages it through construction, and that allows our team to shift their emphasis on to other projects and move those forward.
Go back to here. Yeah. 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 Go forward.
So, this is an example of one of the projects that we're currently working on. It's the Cologne Road Separated Bike Lane Project. As you can see, it's a four-phase project. We're currently under construction with Phase 1A and 1B, which is the work from Stelling to Imperial, and the signal work above in Stelling. Right now, we're in right-of-way acquisition for the next phase, the Stelling to Deansah portion. And as soon as we complete that, we'll be able to finalize the design and move that project forward to construction. Again, this is another one that has significant interest, Stevens Creek Boulevard Separated Bike Lane. We're in the design phase from the Wolf to Tantao section. We're trying to wrap that up by the end of October, and we'll move forward into construction, hopefully at the beginning of the year. This is an example of, we show Phases 2 and 3. 2 and 3 have not been funded. What we anticipate is coming back at mid-year for design money for Phase 2 to move that design along, and then through the annual process, we would have a better estimate of the cost, and through the annual CIP process, we could then request funding for your consideration. Again, this is the Bike Boulevard project. There's a lot of elements in this. We've separated the project out into multiple phases, a lot of interim improvements. When we first bid Phase 1, it came in over budget, so we're looking for alternative delivery methods to deliver the project in a more cost-effective manner. So, we're doing, you know, paving on Portal. As soon as that's finished, we'll put in the speed tables, followed by some pop-ups, so we'll get the interim improvements in. Once the community outreach is completed for Phase 3, we'll know what the entire scope is, and we can then put together a package for permanent improvements for the entire -- for all the Bike Boulevard projects, Phases 1, 2, and 3, and then put that out as one construction package, get a little economy of scale, and hopefully better pricing. But again, this shows you the relative timeframe and when you can expect to see things in the ground and have a facility that people can use.
All right. Thank you, Michael. All right. So, this slide discusses the information that we propose to include with future funding requests. And one of the things I wanted to emphasize, you know, here is really just our inherent role that we need to be flexible. I mean, we do our best to schedule things through the annual CIP process, but things do change over time. And one of the things that Michael didn't mention is things may just simply break, and things need to be repaired that we didn't know about. But, you know, at times, whether we're following the typical CIP path or the out-of-turn path, projects need to go through a very transparent process from inception to funding. This includes the work completed in master plans, what's being vetted by our commissions, and ultimately by your consideration. A good source of information that documents current project progress through this process was included in your Attachment E to the staff report. This document lists each bike and ped project, their status in the master plans, public hearings that have occurred, sources of funding, and lastly, the status of the project. So, that's a good reference if you're interested to know how all the projects stack up relative to each other. So, this slide details, as I said, what we're recommending to be included in future funding requests. And as this presentation, you know, we're nearing an end with our slides. Any comments from council on this slide for suggested additions or additional comments would certainly be appreciated. But in the meantime, let's go over to, I guess it's going to be Alex Araza -- oh, Adam. Adam Araza, I'm sorry. And he's going to give us a demonstration of how much of the information that we've presented in this presentation is going to be available to the public. And it's going to be, I think it's by mid-September is our goal. And it'll be a GIS, a Geographical Information System dashboard, that you can see spatially how the projects are distributed throughout the city, and a lot of the information relative to the status of construction, funding, and things like that will be there. And also, we have a bike and ped interaction map that's pretty interesting as well. So, if you're ready, Adam, we can show that, and then we'll open it up to comments and questions.
Sure. So, this is what we put together with our GIS Department and Michael and Roger. One of the key things here is you have the different types of projects and the different phases along the left side, and using these, you can filter what you're seeing on the map. And then, on this left column, you see the list of projects that are within this project type, and then you can also filter for these different phases that we were discussing earlier. As you click the projects on this left side, it'll highlight where that project is happening on the map. On the side, we have a description, an estimated cost, the funding, and then a couple indicators whether the project is on status for budget and schedule. So, our goal is to just be able to present this in a manner that the public can easily understand where the projects are, what phase they're in, and how long it's going to be until it's completed. So, this is pretty much, yeah, we're targeting mid-September. It's just a little bit more of figuring out just aesthetically how we want this to be presented, and just a little bit more back and forth internally.
Is it difficult, Adam, for you to bring up the interactive map for the bike?
The bike one?
Yeah, because I think that also shows an even more detailed look for bike and ped-specific projects.
Sure.
And even the one that shows the loop.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah, so this is another application our department put together with Public Works. This one shows all the projects that are indicated in the Bike Plan. When you hover over them, it'll tell you which project it is. Clicking on it will tell you the same phases that were indicated in the other application. This one's broken out specifically to show different classes within the Bike Plan, and then there's an animation here to show what potentially this part -- the end product can look like when all of these bike loops are completed.
Is that pretty neat?
This one is already available, right? It's -- if you go to the Bike Plan website, click on a map, you'll get here.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
Yeah, and I think, so the idea, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we'll be updating the information in one location, and these sites will pull from the same information.
Yeah, so it'll be the same information. I think the goal for this one is so that it's just the projects that are being worked on, and it's active, and there's a -- there'll be a product that you can see physically, and then with this one, this is going to have all the products -- projects that are mentioned in the Bike Plan. So, this one, hopefully, is -- they're going to be pulling -- they do both pull from the same source. This one's supposed to be a more current what's going to be finished, and this one's going to be everything that's mentioned in the plan.
Does this show the funding, how much is already funded, how much has been spent?
This -- these do not include the funding, or this one doesn't include the funding, and that's what we're working on to include with this one. I think Michael could probably --
So, this has estimated the cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
But a lot of times, I'm confused with how much has been spent, how much is remaining on a big multi-phase project.
Yeah.
So, that will be included?
Yeah, so we'll have spent to date, sort of what the authorized amount was for the construction. We think that most of the public, anyway, they care about what the construction costs are, so when we come for recommendation of an award, we've got the construction cost itself, and then we have whatever the contingency might be, and that, those two sum up to be the authorized amount. So, that's where we would start, and then we would have the amount spent to date. And if it's on budget, on schedule, those would be on the dashboard.
Okay, yeah. So, for the other one, that, the other one was drawn from the Bike Plan.
This one?
And Bike Plan has some cost estimate for each segment. And so, is it possible to include that? But I know that that cost estimate is very not accurate at all.
Well, yeah, because back in 2016, it was sort of an aggregate of, say, seven or eight projects, and one amount of money was approved at that time. Since then, we have parsed out those dollars to the specific projects, and that's, we're going to keep the funding discreet to each project, you know, going forward. So, we've already done that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Adam, thank you very much. So, that does conclude the presentation, so.
Great. So, before we bring it back to council, I have two speaker cards. If anyone else would like to speak, you can fill out a blue card if you wish. It's not required. First, I have Linda Wykoff, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Linda.
We've watched estimates for Regnar Creek balloon from $664,000 to nearly $6 million and counting. This is due to rising costs on bridge work, moving the baseball field mere feet to the north, and neighborhood security requirements. Why is it that we are told cost is no issue for Regnar, while supporters of the all-inclusion playground and the library expansion for cost over $5 million are asked to fundraise for their projects? What does that say about priorities in this city? What it does say is that Regnar could become our bullet train. The transportation manager said at a recent city council meeting and at a Bike-Ped Commission meeting that project priority ranking criteria is indeed subjective, and admitting this fact is just about the only thing about this process that has been transparent. At the November 2017 Bike-Ped Commission meeting, a motion was passed to adjust scoring by 10 points for school connectivity for Carmen Road Bridge and Regnar Creek Trail to prepare -- to propel these projects to Tier 1 priority. Additionally, it is intimated that every bike accident within Cupertino city limits would have been prevented if Regnar Creek had been built. One council member commented that it appears to be heavy lobbying that pushes projects up to the surface of the list. The amount of pressure that a handful of lobbyists for this trail have exerted is astounding. That in itself should indicate that maybe it isn't such a good idea. If it was a good idea, it would have been supported by its nearest neighbors, which it is clearly not. Developers need Regnar Trail to offset the impact of their large project. Under the general plan, only land connected to creeks and bike paths can be dedicated as parkland. We need to add developers as a special interest group also pushing for this path. We hear about staff needing consensus for certain projects to go forward. Why is neighborhood consent for Regnar never considered? Staff, please tell the citizens of the city how the bicycle boulevards that actually connect neighborhoods to schools, including Deansah, and that benefit a large percentage of the population, are bumped downward at the expense of an unfeasible trail that's opposed by a large segment of our citizenry, a trail which is laden with dangerous blind crossings and many other issues which will make it most unattractive to parents consider their children's -- for their children's school commute. Let's not forget the true meaning of the word "priority." Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Benifer Dastur. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good afternoon, City Council. Hopefully, it won't be "good morning," City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments about items in the study session. We're currently, right now, on Stevens Creek Boulevard between Tantao and Wolf, we have sort of an experiment in progress, which is the bollards. And I understand that this is sort of a, I don't know, I consider the bollards as kind of like the first time out for anything bicycle, big bicycle-related coming into Cupertino. And I appreciate the fact that we have the bollards there. I'm frankly, I wish Apple had spent the money on something else like purchasing a park, but we won't go there. I do want to make sure that, and I'm sure city staff and the tree people are making sure this won't happen, but I don't want to have any damage to our trees between Tantao and Wolf on Stevens Creek Boulevard. I spent like 30 years staring at an empty dirt lot at where Main Street is now, and we have baby trees that have gone in through lots of sweat and blood in the neighborhood, and we want to make sure that they're protected. So, I just had a couple of questions with the bollards. Are they stationary? What happens if you run into them? If your car breaks down and you need to pull over, you run out of gas? What happens if a bus hits them? Do they fall over? Are they fixed to the ground? They blink at night, and I think that's good, but it is a bit distracting when you're driving down there. And how, I noticed that they're kind of close to the entrance to the Main Street Shopping Center, like the turn aisles. I think they're set too close for a car to turn into the entryways. I'm a bit nervous, so I, it makes me not want to go into Main Street. Also, they're very, very close to the side where Steven, for Cupertino High School is. I think we need to have a discussion about what the public is supposed to do when they see a bollard. I, and also, I don't want any incursion into 35-foot setback for Heart of the City. I kind of feel like Cooper, the east side was thrown out there as a guinea pig because Apple funded this, and all of a sudden, the bollards appeared. But I'm also -- But I'm also saying, what happens when San Jose rams their fixed bus rapid transit thing down the middle of the road from eastward into Stevens Creek Boulevard? We're gonna, there's no place for anything. Also, I don't think that the Tuesday 1:00 PM bicycle riding club should be riding through in 20, 20 people on bicycles in neighborhoods. I would rather sacrifice Stevens Creek Boulevard to not have the bicycle clubs riding through the middle of the neighborhoods. I wrote a, I, I want the schools to bring buses back. I rode them from kindergarten to high school.
Okay, finish up, please.
So did my husband and I think that they are the best feasibility. I do not think it's safe for children to ride bikes to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Benefor Dastur? Did I pronounce your name right?
The first time, not this time.
Oh, Benefer, I'm sorry.
We'll keep at it. I'll keep on coming here, so you'll get it by the end of the...
Maybe you could do, you know, like spell it out phonetically or...
How about I keep on coming again and again?
Okay, that's great.
That's better. Okay. So I, I've, I have materials, I'll speak less and show more. So the bike plan of 2016, went over it, it's a fantastic document. Whoever is involved, staff, commissioners, the consultant, it's a great document, so I commend them. So here is the map of collision in the bike. So all the materials I'm presenting are from our 2016 bike ped plan. This is the, this is the map, collision map. This is the area of Creekside and the area where Regnart Creek is proposed. You can see there's no collision there. You can see collision areas all around, but not here. If the map is difficult, here is the text of after this map. It says Stevens Creek Boulevard, Homestead, three corridors with the highest number of reported collisions with Stevens Creek, Stelling, Homestead. So these are the areas where the collisions occur and you can read the report further. This is our bike pad. This is the Caltrans report, which talks about collision areas. You will see all of those, again, DeAnza, Homestead, McLellan. Nowhere is this area, this neighborhood, any street mentioned. The next thing is, the bike pad plan, of course, had several parameters within which the projects were graded. They had another thing called the bike network stress test. That stress test kind of talks about how the bicyclists feel while bicycling on a particular street, particular neighborhoods. So that was pretty exhaustive parameters, a great page for you two. And here are some of the maps of the stress test. So here is the connection to the Civic Center, library. So you can see the blues are what, low stress, average stress, medium. This is again the area of Regnart Creek. This is where the Creekside Park is. You can see it's one of the least stress for bicyclists. Here is the east side of schools, Cupertino, Sajwick and all. You can again see that the, that the stress area is minimal in this neighborhood. This is Creekside, this is Blaney. All the stress areas are Miller, Tantao. You, again, you can watch, take a look in detail on this map and bike pad. Here is after the stress test, here is another page. It says, figure to it shows that medium stress root expand across southern Cupertino to these schools with access to Neighborhood Street. The neighborhood around Creekside Path is the only neighborhood with low stress roots. That is the current area that we live in. Okay? And with all this, and here is something that you know, this are the parameters that were to the pet, pet plan and bike plan, exhaustive rating. And here is what the final bike pad plan rated Regnart Creek as Class 148, lowest in Tier 2, close to Tier 3. So common sense would tell us that this was a great document, great evaluation was done with several parameters and if we stick to these priorities, it's great. We don't need to pull out projects. We don't need to spend millions of dollars on projects which are low priority after doing all this exhaustive work, spending millions of dollars of the consultants, man hours of the staff, workshop, this was, there were community workshops in this. And so there's no justification. As far as the pet plan concerns, that rates Regnart Creek is high, but pedestrian plan for Regnart Creek, spending $6 million for that, when you have all the streets which are 40 feet, 4.5 sidewalks, fit with tree-lined sidewalks. Mayor Sharp lives in this neighborhood, well-connected streets to libraries, Civic Center. So pedestrian, there's absolutely no problem. Make some improvements to the sidewalks and you're good to go. We don't need to spend $6 million for a pedestrian plan for a stroll to go to the library on the Regnart Creek. Let's not starve other high collision areas and streets of funds to fund this wasteful project. Thank you.
Okay. And that's all the cards I have, so we'll bring it back to...
Can the staff answer the question about the bollard?
Oh, Jennifer's question? Sure, okay.
Yeah, she had a few questions. So Jennifer, yeah, we are staying within the, the current footprint of the streets, so we aren't, we aren't going out and hurting any trees. The, the bollards will, will definitely give and bend over. They've already had a few that have been hurt and they'll be all right. And, and I think that they're not lit up, there's, there's probably reflector tape on the top that you're seeing, but there's, there's no power to them. Yeah.
So I would just point out that, in my opinion, it's a good thing that the bollards prevent the bike lane from being used for parking, lift drop-offs, sheriffs giving traffic tickets, a host of things. It doesn't stop realtors from putting their open house signs in the bike lane, which I saw last Sunday, but hopefully we can address that problem some other way. So it is true that if a car breaks down, they would be breaking down in the traffic lane and not in the bike lane, I suppose.
I'd, I'd still recommend that they push it over to the side, just to get it out of the travelway and if, if a bollard, if they can't push it past a bollard, I'd, I'd push it through. It's, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would hope that they don't, they don't stay out of the travel lane because of a bollard. But now when we get the, the raised concrete curbs...
Right, yes, exactly.
That, that will be a, that will be a disadvantage.
So is it possible to use a different color? The green is kind of not very pleasing to the eyes. I mean, green on, plain on the ground is okay, but on the bollard?
You know, that's really the color I've seen. I don't, you know, David might have some different options, but...
Yeah, I know, it's all over San Jose.
It is like what San Jose has. Yeah, I know on Yerba Buena, it's just green.
Very visible, but is there a way to be more, I don't know?
So is this to match the green paint, to make it clear that it's for bicycles or?
It's likely because the green, I think the green is, is, people are getting used to green meaning bikes and so, so greens for the bollards.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's the beauty of these pilots, right? We, we get input from Jennifer and we get input from this and we can, we can make adjustments.
Like more an earth toned color would be...
Well, you want them to be, stand out and be visible.
I want them to stand out, but then the green is so visible, yeah.
Yeah, you could do like bright, bright pink.
Just wondering if there are other options. What other bike friendly cities use, yeah.
John, do you have anything?
Just a couple of questions. So it sounds like, you know, since I'm fairly new, it sounds like prior to 2016, we really didn't have a comprehensive plan. It was just, maybe if a project was discovered or identified, it was worked on, but other than that...
You know, being responsible for the, the street network and the paving, I was working with David closely as we were resurfacing projects, that's when a lot of the bike lanes were being put in and the buffered bike lanes were being put in to, you know, here we had this, this nice black canvas and we could go in and, and reduce widths and get in bike lanes. So I think prior to 2016, a lot of the improvements were that way and we did miles of that.
So 2016 created this comprehensive plan. Has it been updated since 2016 or the comprehensive plan today in 2019 is still the original one?
That's correct.
And on the table that you showed, nice staple because I mean, it's kind of got timelines, you know, I really like those types of Gantt charts, kind of seems to show that all 19 would be complete by 2021?
I don't have that attachment in front of me, but that's, that sounds correct.
And so you think there's sufficient funding for all 19 or do you foresee any issues? Because some of them seem, you know, from the previous bike project reviews in our budget things, we were noticing some of them, you know, are, you know, like $4 million or, do we foresee that all 19 can in fact be funded by the end of 2021 and all 19 are going to happen?
Well, yeah, barring any, any change in, in council direction, the, the 19 will. The, what's, what's not currently funded is the remaining part of Stevens Creek Boulevard that we discussed, you know, coming in for design mid-year and coming in for construction dollars next fiscal year. The, the bike boulevard project, as I've mentioned before, we, we do know that there's going to be a shortfall there.
Okay.
And I see coming in for that, you know, looking at the schedule, because we're going to be constructing, see outreach, build, yeah, so we'll, we're going to be, yeah, likely at mid-year, we'll be coming in for an adjustment for, for the bike boulevards as well, because we will have had all the interim improvements in and done the outreach in phase three. So I see that occurring at mid-year this year.
So then, I'm thinking then that before 2021, there would be another review for the next identified project list or, just kind of foreseeing what's, what's going to happen, you know, as these projects all get taken care of then?
Right.
Do you already have a plan as to you're going to be identifying more or?
Yeah, I, on Attachment D, we, we shared the ones that were sort of multi-phased, that we knew more, you know, funding is, it wasn't funded throughout the whole cycle, so we, we sort of, we tipped our hat to what's coming up on those. But in terms of other projects that aren't on this list, a good reference are the master plans, because, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be looking at those that, that are higher, higher ranked in those plans. And as we have resources to implement those projects and funding to implement those projects, then we would, we'd be taking those projects to the Bike Ped Commission and, and to the various other groups that we mentioned and having that come in as a recommended project for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
So what, what about grant money? I was at the VTA Policy Advisory Committee and they were talking about grant money available. Unfortunately, when they put forth the parameters of how to qualify, it looked like San Jose would qualify for all of it and we would not qualify for any of it.
Sometimes just because of where, who we are and where we're at, it's that way.
So, I mean, hopefully we could get something to help fund this.
But, you know, you know, our, we're looking for those all the time and I, and in fact in Attachment E, if you want to look at each project, you, you could see where external funding is occurring and, because like the McCollum, McCollum project is receiving quite a bit of external grant funding, you know, in addition to the Apple donation, but we, we have all that listed. So anything that we can leverage, we're out there doing it.
Great, okay. Darcy?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, Department Head Lee. So can you go back to the slide that is entitled prioritized project list of funded CIP?
All right, well, let me find which slide number that list is.
It looks like, it looks like it's the sixth slide of your presentation.
All right, it's, it's up on my screen.
Okay, and if they could put that up...
Yeah.
On the general screen as well. Okay, so it looks like, so my first question, I guess it's, and let me preface it with a comment. My comment is that I think we have a good process for considering regular CIP projects and that process includes going through our planning commission, which is this step right here. Is, is there a set meeting that you normally take the CIP projects for the upcoming fiscal year through the planning commission?
It's near the end of May.
End of May? And that happened this year, is that correct?
It did.
Okay. Now let me, let me pull that.
Well, Michael's, it may have been June, but May, May-June is the time period.
Might have been June, okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's codified, is it not? It's, it's required by our municipal code that we take it through planning commission?
Yeah, for the general plan conformance.
Okay. So, oh, and thank you for noting the reason. So the reason that we have this process is so that we can make sure that our capital improvement projects are in conformance and the people that we appoint to advise us with regard to planning issues as well as, you know, with regard to some entitlement issues have already reviewed these projects and made sure that they're, in their assessment in compliance with, with the general plan. And, and that's codified. Now, now can you go to the next slide, please? Okay. So now we have projects outside annual CIP and from my perspective, I think that we should be placing greater scrutiny and certainly not less scrutiny upon these types of projects because they're not going through a regular process. And so I would ask you, could you identify where in this diagram process you would see or the public would see the planning commission reviewing this for conformance to our general plan? Okay. So I, I think you know where, what I'm getting at here. So I, I think here we, we need to modify the flow chart to at least include planning commission input because it does have a codified role in making sure that our projects are in conformance with the general plan. So that would be my only comment. I, I think, you know, the process that you have for grading each of the, of the projects is good and I think that a lot of the concerns are really based on this slide from a systemic perspective. And I think whatever we can be doing to make sure that at the very least we're conforming with what we would normally do in a regularly scheduled type of manner, we absolutely should. If there are any other ideas for perhaps even elevating that standard, I, I would be open to considering and supporting them. But at the very least, we need to make sure that the body that normally recommends to us, based upon their analysis and assessment and interaction with staff, evaluation, whether there is conformance with the general plan, continues to do that in this type of process. Otherwise, it just becomes, you know, just, just too much of a mechanism for, you know, for lack of a better way, a more polite way of saying it, kind of slipping through projects in a manner that tends to engender less public trust.
Yes, Councilman Paul, I, I understand that. We, we can insert that, that in that area and have it go to planning commission.
Great, thank you very much.
So my question is, when you're proposing a new, say, protected bikeway where none existed before, obviously, how do you project the additional usage that is not moving from streets but would be generated because it exists? And I'm thinking, you know, of the paths that my family uses, Santa Masaquino Trail and Stevens Creek Trail, where if those didn't exist, we just wouldn't be riding. There wouldn't be an accident on the regular streets because we just wouldn't be there. So is there any way you quantify how much additional usage would occur based on those protected bike lanes or trails going in?
That question's been asked a, a few times and I've, just from listening to how David has responded to it, it, it is typically not, the information isn't available. It's not just objective to know how many people will use it once you build it. I think you, we look at, at things that surround that proposed improvement, the schools and whether the library or whatever, and we can sort of, just based on proximity, say this would be a well-used trail. But having the, the numbers to say this, this is who will use it and, and when and metrics like that, they generally just don't exist.
Only, it's 6:25. I expected I have a long list, but thank you very much. When I got on the council, it's really fuzzy, all the bike plan project and in your chart and then this flow and then the schedule, it really make things more clear. Thank you so much for the effort. And so can you go back to the master plan process? And, so, can you go back to the master plan process? So, the Parks and Rec Commission is missing. So, I looked at, someone brought up the, the approval for 2018 pedestrian plan. It went to the Bike Pad Commission in November 2017, and then it went to the Bike Parks and Rec Commission in December 2017, because the pedestrian plan is included. So, is that why, is bike plan usually doesn't go to Parks and Rec, but pedestrian does? Is that a required or optional part? Yeah?
Am I on? Yes. As part of our general process, we, we usually do not go to the Parks and Rec Commission with either the bicycle plan or the pedestrian plan. We were asked to this year by the, by the Parks and Rec Department to present at their commission the pedestrian plan, and we'll, we'll present any commission if, if asked by staff to do so, if the commissioners are interested, but it's generally not part of the, the standard process.
Okay, that's good to know. And then, so, a resident brought up in the November 2017 Bike and Pet Commission meeting, that's when the ten points was added to the Riggnott Creek Trail and the Carmen Bridge Trail, to move those two projects to Tier One. And I tried to look in that meeting, Bike Pad Commission meeting agenda doesn't include any attachment for the draft pedestrian plan. So, basically, the public has no way to comment when we don't even provide them the draft plan. And however, I find out for the Parks and Rec Commission, when it was on that agenda in December, the draft plan was included. So, in the future, that's make sure all the Bike Pad Commission meeting will include all the attachments, and if we are talking about Riggnott Creek Trail, all the documents should be included, so that public can comment. Otherwise, only people who attend the commission meeting might be able to, but commenting over a hundred page of documents on the spot is meaningless. Okay, so we want meaningful comment, that's improve that. And another thing that's pointed out is the scoring process. I think we are going to have an update this year for Bike and Pet Commission plan. So, it's pointed out that the scoring for, so I noticed, okay, Carmen Bridge was, ten points was added, because the reason was its route to school. I brought up the map to, of Carmen Bridge, it's very far away from Stevens Creek Elementary School, very far away from other schools near Bob Road. So, why ten points was added? And Riggnott Creek Trail, the same thing, is added, however, the Wilson Park Shared Path, which is around the same geography, the same distance to schools, and serve more areas, because it's not a closed pass. So, it's, I think it's more important to school routes, however, that path has the lower point. So, I think in the future, next year, when we review, the scoring needs to be more objective, and there has, it, we, let's try and reduce the subjective factor, and when we move something, it shouldn't be also like pick two of them that's at ten points. The others, once we are not adding points, but why? That's, 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 that's reduce that kind of picking and choosing, that's be more objective overall, that's hoping to improve. And, so, second, the project initiation form, is that something we have been using? Or, thank you so much, yeah, so is that something we have been using, or is it proposed?
No, this is something we've been using for the last few years.
Oh, okay, so every project that, for the plan is there?
Yes.
Then how about the projects that's added last minute, like the Riggnott Creek Trail or Carmen Bridge? Or, do they have, if they didn't go through the annual process?
I don't believe those had a project initiation form, but I can, I can verify that.
Okay, good. So, with the new annual process we are proposing, those will have a project initiation form and go through the commission?
Right, the, the project initiation form, the, the questions that we ask help describe the project to a greater extent, you know, what the, the advantages are, what the disadvantages are, what might some of the obstacles be, and it describes some of the funding opportunities that people have explored. It really tells how it, how it's advantageous and why we should pursue that, that, that project recommendation. So, it answers a lot of questions, does a lot of the background information, sometimes they provide pictures, sometimes they provide a, you know, a sketch, or, so you, you have a lot, lot more information to make a decision.
That's great, because I, I find out in the past, a project could be on the CIP Budget Recommended List, but it's only a name. There is no map, no background information, so if this kind of project initiation form can be shared as part of the project recommended, the CIP Budget List, then that provide sufficient background information.
So, one of the benefits that the project initiation form does do, it makes people have a little bit more discipline when they propose a project, so it's not just a one-line project, it's, they've thought about it, they've, they've know what the benefits are, they've done some community outreach, and, you know, it's a, you know, somebody's spent some time to put it down and put it in writing.
Yeah, it's a great process. And for projects else, with outside annual CIP, outside annual CIP, I know that there are several factors. I'm a little concerned with the city being driven by donation, because basically, people who are more affluent, they can donate partially to a certain project and then, and then drive city budget to a certain area. That doesn't seem to be fair. So, basically, Apple wants this project, then because they are donating, we have to do what they are asking, so that, I have concern about how we would consider this kind of project, so that, I guess this is a future, for the future council to consider. And another thing is the project schedule. This schedule that you shared, it's really nice, really give a good picture of all the projects. However, it starts in beginning of 2019, right? And so, I wonder, can we also have this chart starting from 2016, when the Bike Pad, when the Bike Plan was approved? Do we, can we expand backwards? So, we have some idea.
We actually have the prior years, it's just not shown on this chart due to a space constraint, but yeah, we can share a
Okay, great.
An expanded schedule with you.
And, so, in, in particular project, for McClellan Road project, I'm, I guess I've been a little impatient in how much progress we have made for projects that the City Council funded since 2016. In the McClellan Road project, by reading the minutes of November 2017 Bike and Pet Commission minute, that, they are already talking about road of, right-of-way acquisition at the time, two years ago. They were already talking about acquisition of corner at the Stevens, at the McClellan Road and Deanza. So, two years ago, they were already talking about that, West Acres, and then two years, there is no progress, and from this project plan, it's as if we are starting from scratch this summer, so.
It is a little misleading when you look at it, because like, that intersection particularly, the seventy-six station is there on the south, southeast corner, so we have the right-of-way there on that corner, because they've come in for, or, or we're very close to having it, because they're going through a developer agreement. So, you know, if you look at the schedule, it says, yeah, we've not done anything, but we've, we've
So, it's ongoing, it has been ongoing since 2017.
That's right. It's more important here is to say, we're, we're just drawing a line there at the northwest corner, we do have some, you know, either we'll get the right-of-way or we won't, and, and we have a reasonable design that we can do the improvements that we need with what we have, but at some point, we're just going to say, that's all we're going to get, and we will then proceed with, with, with the design and the construction, and we would advise council of, you know, the limitations of what we're doing.
Yeah.
But it's more important there to just look at the end date, because at some point, we're going to say, it's either going to happen on the northwest corner or it won't, and then we're going to proceed.
Yeah, okay, good. So, I, I think my point is, this, this project was funded in 2017, I mean, sixteen, so even though there are three phases, they don't have to come sequentially one after another. We can, this is a high priority project, and that means all three phases can be started at the same time, and, but then what we have seen is that the six, the later phases have been kind of delayed, and then the number, the list of projects ballooned from six to nineteen now. So, I'm concerned, we are adding, adding more projects while higher priority projects get delayed. So, that's one example, and Bike Boulevard project, again, is also a project that's funded since 2016, and we are still not doing anything after three years, and hopefully there will, something will get done by next year, but, yeah.
Well, it'll be, yeah, it'll be this year, I mean, that, the schedule for those two projects are, you know, we're going to hit those marks.
Yeah, okay, so, the McClellan, Stevens Creek Boulevard project, I thought that's the one that has a potential for grant funding, and that was the reason I was told that Apple is not funding it, because we could get VTA funding, is that still a possibility? I mean, the rest of Stevens Creek, from eighty-five to Wolf.
Yeah, yeah, I, no, I do believe it is eligible for funding.
So, we are pursuing funding for that?
Yes, right.
Hmm, great. Okay, so, yeah, that's all, thank you so much. So, looking forward to Bike Plan updates, and I hope we can work with the community more and be more transparent, especially in the scoring of the projects, because some of the scoring in the current plan is very rough. It's like half of the project got forty points, full score for close to school, and that's not a very differentiation, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Rod? Okay, Darcy?
I'd like to see if I can get support from another council member to ask the City Attorney's Office to go back to our May twenty-eighth, 2019 meeting of the Planning Commission, item number four. That's where the Planning Commission was reviewing the capital improvement program, and one of the items attached to that item was the text of the California Government Code, as well as our Cupertino Municipal Code that governs the requirement of the review. And so, the reason I ask is related to the issue that I brought up. If a capital improvement project comes midstream in the middle of a year, it would seem, based upon our municipal code, which only requires an annual review, that there might be a little bit of porosity there, and so, I, I would like to get a recommendation from the City Attorney's Office as to how we handle this, because presumably, if something comes mid-year, there's going to be another annual review subsequently, and perhaps the Planning Commission could be considered, to be considering that project, or if there's a need for us to perhaps amend our municipal code to cover these types of projects, I think that would make our process of evaluation much more consistent with the normal CIP annual process, for, for these types of projects that happen in the middle of the year.
We can do that, thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Oh, is there
Great, I, I support that. Actually, I'd like to add something that, so our general plan does say that we want to implement the bike plan, so whenever we have new project that's proposed, and then maybe we have bike plan that's in the 2016 or eighteen bike pedestrian plan, that's right next to the project, are the applicants required to implement portions of the bike, bike and pedestrian plan in the neighborhood of those project? So, is that required? Is that an objective standard we can enforce? If not, how we can modify our general plan to enforce that, so that as the project to develop, we can maybe help implement the plan?
Yeah, and, and we've talked about this before, and I think there's an item coming before you to discuss sort of other objective standards that could be placed in the general plan and project approval procedures, and we can look into that further, but right, right now, it's not required, and I think there may be limits on what can be required.
So, if a project is approved, does the Planning Commission need to review the compliance with the general plan? Just like the CIP project?
Yes, they have a checklist of, that they review to determine if a project complies, and I think that is also another future agenda item that's coming before you.
Okay.
To explain that process.
Is that coming in the next meeting or the next two meetings, or what's the
That's, I think, up to the discretion of the mayor and city manager as they schedule our meetings.
Okay, but it's not, it's not later tonight, right?
No.
Just for clarification to the public?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, so we can adjourn the study session and reconvene at six forty-five. Okay, we're on to the regular meeting, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Councilmember Paul?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Scharf?
Here. Okay, first, I will do the report out from the closed session on August twentieth. Item one, the subject was conference with real property negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8, property is Cupertino Municipal Water System, agency negotiations Roger Lee and Deborah Fung, negotiating party is City of Cupertino and San Jose Water Company, under negotiation, terms for city leased asset. Council provided direction to its negotiators regarding potential terms for a renegotiated lease of the Cupertino Municipal Water System, no reportable action was taken. Item two, conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code 54956.91, regarding pending litigation, Friends of Better Cupertino versus City of Cupertino, Santa Clara County Superior Court Case Number Eighteen CB Three Three Zero One Nine Zero SB Thirty-Five Valco Project. The council discussed with legal counsel this pending litigation, for which discussion in open session would prejudice the city in the litigation, no reportable action was taken. Item three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92, one potential case, no reportable action was taken. Item four, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.94, two potential cases, no reportable action was taken on either the first or the second potential case. And that is it. So, now we are on to ceremonial manners and presentations, we have none. Postponements, are there any postponements?
No, Mr. Mayor, and I'm working on organizing your oral communications cards, which is next, so give me just one moment.
Okay. So, oral communications is for items, not on the agenda, and while we can refer questions to staff, we cannot engage in debate or back and forth with the speaker. So, each person gets three minutes, it's appreciated if you're briefer than three minutes. First, we have Munee Mahapatla, followed by Sudha Kamasetti, followed by Brooke Azat. Welcome, Munee.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council, so we'd like to combine Sudha's time and my time, just in case, and if I go over three minutes, is that okay?
As long as you both stand there.
Yeah, okay. So, we are here to personally invite the mayor, city council, and the city manager, clerk, and the city staff, all commissioners, to participate in the Right for Diabetes event that's being held on September eighth, 2019, nine AM at Memorial Park. So, you can go to www.righthordiabetes.org. As city officials, your participation will show to the community your leadership in tackling this menacing and this menacing and preventable disease. Why diabetes, right? So here is some data. Cost of diabetes in U S A, this is, you know, from two thousand and seventeen. This data is from American Diabetes Association, directly, you know, from their website. Total estimated cost of, you know, diabetes in U S is three hundred and twenty-seven billion dollars that year, right? In that, you know, the direct medical cost, two hundred and thirty-seven billion dollars, lost productivity is around ninety billion dollars. And average medical expense for a diabetic is around sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, right? Nine thousand, six hundred of that is attributable to diabetes, right? Diabetes affects, you know, one in every eleven Americans, that's about thirty million people in U S. And eighty-four million people are pre-diabetic, are at the risk of, you know, type two diabetes. Interestingly, you know, ninety percent of them don't even know that, right? That's unfortunate. Two hundred and seventy-seven thousand premature deaths are due to diabetes, right? Every twenty-one second, someone is being diagnosed with diabetes, right? So between two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, twenty-six percent increase in the cost of diabetes. And diabetes is the seventh largest cause for death in U S, right? And of course, you know, this affects employers and the families, right? Absentism, productivity loss, care for family, and, you know, disease-related disabilities and premature deaths, list goes on. So what can we do about it, right? So Lions Club International and Deonza Alliance joined hands to combat it, right? So the result is, you know, Right for Diabetes Community Event that was born two years ago. Our request is, you know, all residents and, you know, everyone in, in and around Cupertino, participate, support and raise funds, you know, to fight this epidemic. We intentionally kept the registration fee lower so that, you know, we can get larger community participation. It's only twenty-five dollars, you know, to register and participate in the event. And we expect the outcome to be, you know, create awareness in the community, support research and treatment, get people into the healthy habits, you know, by biking, you know, you can fight this disease. And, and of course, you know, there'll be free diabetes screening onsite on the day of the event. And of course, you know, we want to make this an annual recurring event in Cupertino so that, you know, more and more people become aware and, you know, and join the fight. So we have two parts-rich routes that we designed for the event. So the event starts at Memorial Park and goes around, and you can see the route here. It has stops at, you know, Memorial Park, Don Burnett Bridge, at the end of the bridge, Jolivon Park, Linda Vista, Mona Vista Park, and various, variant park. This is a shorter route. We also have a longer route. If you're wondering, you know, how can you ride, you know, twenty-five miles in Cupertino, that is still possible, okay? Look at the route.
Wow.
So it's got stops at, you know, almost nine parks, right? So start at the same Memorial Park, goes through, you know, entire Cupertino, and you get to see, you know, wonderful Cupertino that we live in, right? And you get to stop at the parks and enjoy, right? So that's our presentation, so I would like to see participation from everyone in the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next I have, oh, sorry.
I, I just want to add that while Munee talked about the seriousness of, you know, diabetes and spreading awareness, I also want to add that this is going to be a super fun event for families and for kids as well. And we've designed it in such a way that everybody's gonna have fun. So along, I have some flyers, can I put them with City Clerk?
Sure.
And then I invite all of you to, please go ahead onto the website and register. Today, we have a raffle which we draw every week, and you could win a certificate from Amazon. Thank you.
So how do you sign up?
Go to?
Go to the website, right for diabetes dot O R G, and it's very simple. Register, click on the register button. We do have certain teams already there. You could join one of the existing team, or you could even create a new team for yourself and invite members to join. This is your way of showing your support to the community. So, yeah, that's the way.
We'd like to see, you know, City of Cupertino team.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where it's gonna be located.
All right, thank you. Next I have Brooke Azat, followed by Sedar M., followed by Larry Dean. Welcome, Brooke.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. There's a couple of things in the housing policy that bother me, and I was hoping that something could be done about them. First of all, the housing allocations. Recently Cupertino has been pilloried for housing, for supposedly not building housing, when in fact we have developers who were awarded housing allocations and have not acted on, have not acted on them. They should not be allowed to hoard them. We need to have benchmarks, performance benchmarks. This is after all the valley, where a year out, they have to have submitted the plans, et cetera. And if they don't perform, the allocation should be awarded to someone else that's willing to do the job. Secondly, it would be nice if we could have completion bonds attached to housing projects so that the housing that's marketed to the Planning Commission and to the council is the housing that actually materializes, instead of people throwing fecal matter on the wall, seeing if it sticks and proceeding. We don't want to have any more, oops, we're gonna build affordable condos, and then we have a luxury hotel. Another item that I think might be worthwhile considering is the city floating a housing bond for people who need housing, not building high-tech ghettos, but building housing for people who actually make the city run. I also think we should consider having an empty unit tax, as they did in Vancouver. Vancouver had an awful lot of real estate, real estate speculators, and what they did is they put a tax on the units that were empty. So that forced more mark, housing on the market. And it's a win-win proposition because if the people choose not to rent the property, we get taxes. If they choose to rent the property, there's more units on the market. And finally, I would really like it if the city could consider redefining the definition of retail. So there's a hard and fast definition of retail, so it's not a go-to excuse for somebody building higher and higher. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Brooke. Next we have Sedar M., followed by Larry Dean, followed by Ignatius Ding. Welcome. Did I pronounce your name right?
Yes, I, pretty close, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. My name is Sridhar Money, and I have been a resident of Cupertino for less than a year right now. I live on Lamar Drive, which is less than a mile away from here. I'm here today to ask for your support on the continued work on the, the Regnar Creek Trail. I have noticed that the, there are lots of beautiful parks, and in fact, some of the people who spoke just before me mentioned that there are many more parks that I haven't seen here yet. One of the things I've also noticed is that access to these parks is, is very safe and we have, when we don't need to go on, on the public roads. So the Regnar Creek Trail is, is gonna be helping children, adults, and seniors in our community to enjoy several of these local parks without having to get in a car and drive to them. And this would also make it possible for events in these parks to be better attended, things like fireworks, sporting events, and summer neighborhood events. I would encourage you to support this trail for the benefit of all of our residents, and thank you for listening to me and listening to others who are speaking on this topic. Good evening.
Okay, thank you for being brief. Larry Dean, followed by Ignatius Ding, followed by Greg Schaefer. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and council. I'm here on behalf of Walk by Cupertino regarding the Regnar Creek Trail. And I'll put, lay this out if you can see that. In response to Gary Wong's assertion at last meeting regarding the public right-of-way around the Lozano Homeowners Association, as usual, the argument made was incomplete and therefore inaccurate. Omitted was the council's action in two thousand and three, adopting the joint use agreement with the Silicon Valley Water District, allowing the district's land to be used as a walking and biking trail. Gary had pointed out that, that the setback requirement or the, the right came from Rodriguez over to the trail. But also, he didn't mention that the Regnar Creek Trail usage was penned out. Omission, obfuscation, obstruction, disruption at city meetings. No real attempt to find common ground or solutions for the community good. One has to tip their hat to the anti-trail leaders. They don't give up, they just don't want the trail near their homes. And we understand that, but strongly disagree. There are plenty of examples where bike and ped trails are closely integrated into the neighborhoods. Here in Cupertino, Saratoga, Los Gatos, San Jose. With over sixteen hundred citizen signatures of strong support for the Regnar Creek Trail, this is a classic case of interests of the broad community versus the few. Not only with this key project, but with all bike, ped projects throughout the entire city. On September seventeenth, you're slated to review and choose whether to continue the Regnar Creek Trail project or shelve it. The community will anxiously be watching and judging your decision. The Cupertino's citizens overwhelmingly want our city to be safe and easy place to walk and bike for students, residents, children, and parents. They want our city to be the place it can be, not kept, not keep it the way that it's always been. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Next we have Ignatius Ding, followed by Greg Schaefer, followed by Richard Mellinger. Welcome, Ignatius.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and member of the council. My name is Ignatius Ding, forty-two years of resident of Cupertino. Tonight, I want to bring to your attention a serious problem that we have with one appointed city commissioners. Please consider to direct our city attorney to investigate and initiate the process of removing this individual from the Cupertino City Planning Commission if warranted. Planning Commissioner Davy Fong is known, a known bully in our community, who often verbally abuse others on social media, such as Nextdoor, under the guise of freedom, free of, free speech, with his clever, long, and rather tiresome ranting to attack and degrade, degrade others who he disagree with. Noticeably, he has brought his trimping-style verbal agitation to the diocese of the City Planning Commission to disrupt and dominate the commissioners' discussion of the city affairs, much with his own personal agenda in support of commercial developers known as the Bill, Baby Bill mantra. Like every Americans in this land of freedom and democracy, Davy Fong is entitled to his own opinion as an individual, but he's using and abusing his position as a city commissioner to openly attack fellow commissioners and residents at Planning Commission meetings and at times at city council meetings. His behavior literally is becoming that of a, is unbecoming that of a city official. Please review the city video archive of the past commissioner meetings to verify. Furthermore, Davy Fong has a personal conflict of interest in this matter since he is a founding member of two housing lobby groups mainly founded, as shown online, by commercial developers. His name can, can be easily found on their websites as follows, the catalyst, catalyze S V dot org and Silicon Valley at home. Hereby, I formally request the council to consider initiating action to remove Davy Fong from the City Planning Commission and place in the city records that he should not be appointed to any city position in the future until he can establish legal proof with no more conflict of interest on his part. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ignatius. Next we have Greg Schaefer, followed by Richard Mellinger, followed by Dolly Sandoval. Welcome, Greg.
Hi, my name is Greg Schaefer. I have lived in Cupertino for twenty-nine years. I'll give you a brief history of the Valco Plan as I see it. In two thousand and sixteen November, when there's an election, Measure D, which described what Sandhill wanted to do in great detail, was defeated by the voters of Cupertino. Two years later, two thousand and eighteen November, the people who were running, which I would say for common sense, were elected, or re-elected. The three people who were sponsored by Sandhill were defeated by these voters of Cupertino. Doesn't this tell you something? You people have been placed here by the voters of Cupertino. And we know how the voters feel from what happened in two thousand and sixteen. They haven't changed much. Anyhow, what you do tonight, I'm not gonna give you any advice. I trust you to do whatever seems best for Cupertino. Thank you, goodbye.
Oh, thank you, Greg. Thank you for being brief. Next we have Richard Mellinger, followed by Dolly Sandoval, followed by Heather Dean. Welcome, Richard.
Mayor Scharf, council members. My name is Richard Mellinger. I am a resident of Sunnyvale, and I am here solely on my own behalf. You may have read a thing or two I've written in the past few months, and I wish I could say it was good to see you all again, but let's be honest, it's not. Late this June, I saw some comments from Planning Commission Chair Ray Wong about the Valco redevelopment, calling on his readers to save the suburbs from an onslaught of anarchists and Yimby neoliberal fascists. I tweeted that his comments were unacceptable and that he needed to recuse himself from Valco-related matters. My tweet caught his attention. He responded on Nextdoor, "Well, that's fun, smiley face. We'll have to talk to Richard's employer," smiley face. Next time you get hurt," he went on, "next time you get harassed by a Yimby, track down their employer and send their H R, legal, and C E O a letter outlining their Yimby stance. It goes a long way to getting them reprimanded." Facing blowback, Wang prevaricated, claiming that he only wanted people to urge my employer to fund affordable housing, an absurd claim that he is still repeating on Nextdoor. For a public official to threaten his critics' jobs chills freedom of speech. It violates the spirit, if not the letter of the First Amendment, which Chair Wang and all of you are sworn to uphold. That on its own is grounds for removal. But Wong is a prominent backer of Better Cupertino. In two thousand and sixteen, he donated over five thousand, five hundred dollars to the Yes on Sea campaign. So Mayor Scharf slapped his wrist, and that appeared to be that. Now, thanks to reporting in the San Jose Spotlight, we learned that this is not the first time Chair Wong has attempted to intimidate his political opponents. In two thousand and three, he pled no contest to sexual harassment. He had subscribed Redwood City Council Member Roseanne Faust to internet pornography in an apparent bid to damage her reputation. He was angry with her over, of all things, a water recycling project. When reached for comment, he said that he had been hacked by, and I quote, "developer interests for recycled water." Given his recent behavior, I was unsurprised to see Wang crying fake news. Still, I expected better of you, Mayor Scharf. Sadly, I was disappointed. After posting a pro forma message, you proceeded to compare the Spotlight to the National Enquirer before complaining that it is funded by the Water District. I was disappointed, but I was not surprised, Mayor Scharf. You opened this year by wisecracking that Cupertino would build the wall and San Jose would pay for it. You led the repeal of this city's code of ethics. You packed its boards and commissions with cronies like Wong. You voted to repeal the Valco-specific plan after saying on tape it should go to the voters. You lied to a San Jose Spotlight reporter's face and then repeated those lies in the Mercury News, claiming the Valco-specific plan had no units of affordable housing when it had nearly six hundred. Council members, Ray Wong is plainly unfit for office. With Mayor Scharf having failed to take action, it now fails to you to do so. Please agendize an item for his removal immediately. Thank you.
Next we have Dolly Sandoval, followed by Heather Dean, followed by J R Fru, and welcome, former mayor Sandoval.
Last week, we celebrated the ribbon-cutting at Veranda, giving nineteen families much-needed relief for housing, affordable housing stability. This project was over a decade in the making. I for one initiated a conversation with Barry Swenson Company over a decade ago to make an affordable housing project be built on that parcel. It takes a village to make a village, and eventually, a partnership arose between the City of Cupertino, the County of Santa Clara, and Charities Housing. This project epitomizes the can-do positive spirit that occurs when people come together to work towards a solution that makes a difference and betters that surrounding community. When I served on the city council from two thousand and one to two thousand and nine, many of us with different opinions, backgrounds, and those came from different walks of life, we rolled up our sleeves, worked with one another, and found common ground, creating solutions that worked. Back then, the city council and all the commissioners served this community openly, transparently, with honesty, sincerity, and integrity. We realized we were public servants in every meaning of that word, public. So imagine my dismay when I read about Ray Wong, the chair of our Planning Commission, openly disparaging members of our community simply because residents with different points of view had the audacity to express them. He then went further and posted his tactics for what to do with those in opposition. Contact their employers in order to get them reprimanded and fired. Honestly, this is unacceptable. Honestly, this is unacceptable behavior. Ray was appointed to serve this public. If he won't or can't serve the public with dignity and respect, he should quit. Ray seems to have forgotten that the democracy that we all live in was founded on the principles of critical debate and acceptance of differing opinions. And you, the city council, have been silent on this appointee. I believe you should rethink your silence under the banner of transparency and ethics in government, which many of you ran on. Take this issue up. Do you really want someone so vindictive serving our community? We may disagree on a lot of topics, but I would hope that you would agree that you now need to step up and address this issue in a transparent manner, deal with one of your own who so openly and flagrantly scoffs at the public when serving in a public role. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Dolly. Next we have Heather Dean, followed by JR Fruin, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome Heather.
Thank you. Counsel, I attended the town hall meeting last Saturday, and I was sitting and I turned around and noticed that it was being recorded. And I asked the person who was recording it, since he didn't have any badges of any kind, who he was. Was he a city employee? And he said, "No, but the people up there know that I'm here." I don't know who he was. I objected to the fact that he was recording everybody, and I don't think that it was, especially in this day and age when things are transposed and changed. So I would hope that you would not allow somebody to record these town hall meetings, or if you do allow it and broadcast it, have the city do it because they can be trusted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Heather.
Can we have the city attorney clarify whether public is allowed to record a public meeting? Do they need permission?
Yes, I believe so.
They don't need permission from the city?
That's right.
Right. Okay, next we have JR Fruin, followed by Rhoda Frye, and I'm not sure of the next one. Ed Hirschfield, it says Agenda, it doesn't say Oral, but if it's for Oral, then it's Ed Hirschfield. So welcome JR Fruin.
Good evening, counsel. I'll try to keep this very brief. I've lived here for just shy of forty years now. It's been about two months at this point since Ray Wong took to Nextdoor to attack the private employment of his political opponents, and you still haven't done anything about it. The longer that you let this situation go on, the more obvious it is that you condone this plainly anti-democratic behavior, and it's really quite surprising. John, you ran as John for Democracy. Ray Wong's behavior is not democratic. You didn't vote for him initially when he applied for the commission, and I don't know why you would stand for him remaining there. Darcy, in 2018, when you were mayor, you finished your State of the City address with the admonition for all of us to be kind to each other, or rather, to be good to each other. This is not being good to each other. The five of you get to decide now, really, what kind of city you want. Do we actually believe in democratic norms, or is this the way that we really want to have our city function? Thank you.
Okay, thank you JR. Next we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Ed Hirschfield, followed by Jonghee Yi. Welcome Rhoda.
Hi, I'm Rhoda. I'm here representing me, myself, and I. And I wanted to thank Rod Sinks. On September sixteen, September sixteen, from 6:30 to 8:30 in this very room, the Bay Area, why am I tongue-tied? The Bay Area Air Quality Management District, otherwise known as BACMed, and BACMed Stationary Source Committee Chair Rod Sinks will be hosting a meeting pertaining to Lehigh air pollution and truck traffic pollution. In the past, we have had stakeholder meetings here, and they haven't happened in years. So this meeting is long overdue. I do hope this meeting will be well-attended and that we will get answers to many questions such as, why is Lehigh the only cement plant in the state out of eight that has been out of compliance with Clean Air Act for at least twelve out of the last twelve quarters? How can our air be considered healthy if Lehigh is burning petroleum coke in its kiln fired at 3,000 degrees? How can our air be considered healthy when Lehigh emits seventeen toxic air contaminants above chronic trigger levels? Lehigh is the number-one greenhouse gas emitter in Santa Clara County. What can BACMed do to encourage Lehigh to burn cleaner fuels? We need to be vigilant about global warming. Now, limestone is said to be able to fly 4.3 miles, and Lehigh intends to use over 1,100 tons of explosive per year at the surface for its new mining operations. How can BACMed reduce fugitive dust from blasting? Finally, I have found some, what I found to be rather shocking news. This on the overhead is a report from an independent tester who goes to Lehigh, and they go to Lehigh annually, just like getting a smog test for your car. You go there and it passes or fails, and they have certain rubrics. Well, they found that aspects of the air permit are confusing and contradictory highlighted, that also that it is ambiguous and unenforceable. And once again, it says that there are other requirements. A SEM, a CEM, is a continuous emission monitor system, are also unenforceable. So how can we have an air permit that's unenforceable? This is supposed to protect us. So we'll be sure to have many questions and look forward to many answers, and I hope there'll be a really big crowd here on September sixteen from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in this very room. Thank you, Councilmember Sinks.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we're hoping to answer many of the public's questions at that meeting, and you can send me questions in advance.
And so can everybody else, I guess.
Thank you Rhoda.
Not just me, right? Yes, everybody, send Rod Sinks question.
So next I have Ed Hirschfield, if he was speaking on Oral, and Ji-Hong, Ji-Honghee Yi, it says Bike Ped Presentation, which we've already had, but you're welcome to speak during Oral, followed by Jeff Paulson. Welcome Ed.
Hi, I'm Ed Hirschfield. I've been a resident, homeowner in Cupertino for fifty-six years. I'm here to demand that you delete Agenda Item 11 from the agenda because it has not been properly preceded by notice and the transparency required under the law. I do know that I am making this request and demand before you are hearing Agenda Item 11. I don't think you should hear it now because there are too many uncertainties in the air, mostly the pending lawsuits and the notification by the state that we, the city, are subject to a $600,000 per month fine for impeding or in any way slowing down the Valco replacement under SB 35. I, as a citizen, don't want to be subject, the city to be subject to a $600,000 per month fine, which will somehow find its way into my taxes. I don't want to be subject to loss of the suits presently being brought by friends of better Cupertino. I don't want to be subject to the possible fines and fees that Cupertino may be subject to based on the recent letter from the Sand Hill about the liability of the city due to its actions causing the increase of Valco. I want to make sure that you understand that we should not believe revisionist history. Fifty-six percent of the people in Cupertino voted for the Sand Hill's development, Hills at Valco. Only 45% of the population voted for Agenda Item C. None of you on the city council, with the possible exception of Darcy Paul and Rod Sinks, were elected by a majority of the populace. You all were rejected, elected by 20 to 30% of the populace. What you're doing does not reflect the majority opinion of Cupertino. There has been no vote or transparency regarding any of the actions taken on Valco, and I think you're acting on behalf of a minority. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Ed. Madam City Attorney, are we, we're not allowed to point out errors of fact at this point? Is that true?
I have brief responses to public comment.
Okay, that's okay. It's fine. Everybody knows. Next is Ji-Hong Yi, followed by Jeff Paulson, followed by Vanessa Tekmansky. Welcome, Ji-Honghee Yi.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ji-Honghee Yi, and I'm over ten years resident of Cupertino, and I'm speaking for myself. The issue that I'm going to address is related to Bike Ped priority as well as Reggert Creek Trail. So I appreciate that the city's effort to make bikers and pedestrians to be safe and by developing, you know, safe routes and also trying to get some more, more objective measure to decide which one it is. But still, like, as Bike Ped Commission, they pointed out, the major problem space, most of the collision happens where the major road is, which is Stevens Creek Boulevard, Sterling Road, and Homestead Road. Those are three major point of problem, and also, as this map indicates, most of the problem spots are on this major road. So therefore, I think it makes most sense to allocate our effort, prioritize and allocate our budget into those problem areas first and then address some other issues, like where, so therefore, this area where the Reggert Creek Trail is proposed is the area where hardly any accidents are so far reported, so it has to be deep prioritized. And in addition, the existing Bike Boulevard network that is already funded, that addresses all the major parts of that section where it doesn't have much accidents at all. So therefore, I don't think this Reggert Creek Trail would add any more safety to the bikers. Therefore, I think this project has to be deep prioritized, and we have to actually push this Bike Boulevard network to be implemented first and then see what happens, why we are missing, why we are needing. As we can see on the map, this is really redundant road that we don't really have to spend $8 million for this small road. It's, if we, I mean, with this much of the money, I mean, the problem areas on the city of Cupertino, $8 million has to be better spent to address these problem areas rather than the area where there is hardly any accident is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Jeff Paulson, followed by Vanessa Tekmansky, followed by James Moore. Welcome Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is just a brief comment about transportation. Yesterday, my wife and I breezed up a road in Yosemite National Park that's been closed to cars, and we were followed by a young man on electric skateboard who quickly drew a crowd. My point is that these electric skateboards, electric-assisted bicycles, mopeds, all kinds of transportation are becoming increasingly popular, and young people are not driving cars as much. Therefore, things are going to change. When my grandfather came here to go to Stanford in 1914, his family transportation was a horse and wagon. Twenty years later, he was able to barrel down 101 in a car. I think things are going to change in the next 20 years in that order of magnitude. And Roger Lee, I'm glad you're here because this is really going to affect you with your streets, and I think we need to be prepared. We need to think, we need to think ahead, and we need to think about how we can work with the mass transit that Rod Sinks is working on, on the last mile solution, and begin to think about not stopping traffic, but changing traffic to become something different. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Jeff. Next we have Vanessa Tekmansky, followed by James Moore, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome Vanessa.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vanessa Tekmansky. I'm a thirty-year Cupertino resident. Tonight, I'd like to address my disappointment in the efficacy of both the adopted and proposed California housing bills. Much of the financial backing for housing bills like Senator Weiner's SB 35 comes from the real estate, tech, and construction industries. I hope that more people recognize these special interests profit-making free-for-alls for the lip service and temporary Band-Aids that they are. This is clearly evidenced by the failure of the bills to address the real drivers underlying and fueling our housing problems. First and foremost, the housing bills allow more lucrative office and luxury housing to be built in what are already some of California's most housing-deficient areas with only minimal, if any, correlation to the precise socioeconomic housing needs of those communities. Indeed, SB 35 allows developers to build office that far outpaces housing needs. On the flip side, nothing in the bills gives incentives to developers to build in cities like Hayward or Gilroy where they are desperate for jobs and housing would be more affordable. Other equally important factors driving our housing problems are almost completely ignored or overlooked in the bills. They include the lack of monetary accountability and responsibility of Big Tech for the housing shortages and displacement that they create in the communities where they locate, decreasing land availability and maturing urban centers, developers who sit on housing entitlements and don't build to hedge their bets year after year, rising construction costs, cuts in government spending for subsidized housing, increased speculation and the commodification of housing, especially through foreign investment, vacant housing, and/or seldom-used second and third homes, an overabundance of Airbnbs, out-of-control income disparity, a major lack of transit funding and coordination, and last but not least, nothing in the housing bills requires developers to pass on the profits from upson densities back to the public through lower rents at all. Without addressing these issues, housing will never be adequate or affordable in Silicon Valley or other major cities in California. Developers and investors will always build what and where they can to command the greatest profits, so allowing them to do so by right will only encourage more of the problems that got us into this mess in the first place. And please remember, every square foot of office at Valco translates to roughly two-and-a-half times that amount of housing space needed for those workers to live. Thank you.
Thank you Vanessa. James Moore, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Tessa Parrish. Welcome James Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Moore. I've lived here in Cupertino since 1976. It's a very desirable community, and I've stayed, planned to stay, and yet, I come to these meetings and I've gone to the Planning Commission meetings, and I have to sit through a lot of accusations of extreme claims being made against some of the folks that are serving, both on the city council and on the Planning Commission. They're embellished, they're exaggerated, they are extreme. I've gone back and looked at a few of those, and I've looked at what took place before some of this happened. And Ray Wong, for example, if you go back to the early meetings and you go back to Nextdoor, he was bullied, he was harassed, and a lot of it was from non-residents initially. You heard one of them tonight, Richard from Sunnyvale. And that bothers me that people from the outside can come here and make accusations against the people that are sitting on a diocese that are trying to service the community. I don't know Ray personally. I introduced myself to him on the 30th of July at one of his meetings. But my wife and I, as far as coming to these meetings, have always found him to be friendly to everyone. He seems to be very fair-minded. He's very informed and knowledgeable about the concerns and the issues here in Cupertino, and he seems to be trying his best to work out some solutions with the residents and with the people that he is sitting with as far as the Planning Commission. So, like I say, it really, really bothers me that we have so much outside influence here making accusations, and at least from my understanding, all of the accusations that have been raised are a result of people bullying him and him responding, maybe not appropriately as a sitting commissioner member, but I know I would have been driven to do something, and I don't know what I would have done if somebody would have attacked me as he was attacked early on. Again, I support him fully, and I look forward to having him stay on the city Planning Commission and make some good decisions for the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Jim. Next we have Lisa Warren. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Tessa Parrish, followed by Coop Rez. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I'm going to speak later, if I'm still here, on Item 11, but because a previous speaker brought up Item 11 here, I need to respond in a way that I think is appropriate for oral communications. And I actually want to provide each of you and the City Manager some information. I'll bring it up. So there were comments made about not enough notice. We've had five years, over five, well, five years, let's call it, and in less, a little more than, a little less than four and a half years, there were workshops and surveys, et cetera, et cetera, about what people in this community could tolerate as far as development. I won't give more detail because I'll get into the Item 11 thing. Those packets for you are some of the information from May 19, 2015. They're all public records. I'm sorry I am duplicating them because you should already have them. But it's clear that these discussions about our general plan and what's tolerable have been spoken loud and clear. The results of the surveys and the workshop will show you what people want. Again, I'm going to dip into the Item 11 if I go too far, but I just hope that you respect the history of this city back five years ago and how a single development and a single move from, well, a brewing move and a single decision from a previous council woke a sleeping giant in your residents. And that's the reason that three of you are up there, at least three of you are up there. The community has spoken about what they want and you have every right to look at that later and make a decision that matches what it says. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Tessa Parrish. And last card is from Coop Rez. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am here because I actually wasn't planning on speaking, but I heard attacks on Commissioner Ray Wang and I heard democracy being mentioned there and censorship is not democratic. Just wanted to let you know that and for anyone else who thinks that. I don't know Ray personally, but he, I first met him when we were getting signatures for the referendum and he came and sort of fended off the people that were heckling us during those signatures. We were being harassed and everything else and he stood there bravely and tried to get them off our backs so we could continue working. That's all I know about Ray, but I see that he's being harassed and democracy is being announced along with that. I'd like to point out that censoring anybody would not be democratic. This is America. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tessa. The last card is from Coop Rez. And I do remind people, it does not require that you use your name. If you want to speak anonymously, that's fine. Welcome, Coop Rez.
Thank you, Mayor. The current housing crisis is a result of decades of overbuilding office and not balancing that with residential. This council has the vision and I hope you have the fortitude to make it better or at least not to make it worse. Every city wants office. It's lucrative, there's a good revenue there. It's harder to deal with the drag from housing and the resources that you have to provide to those residents. So every community wants to maximize the office and minimize the housing and that's what's happened and this is where we are. Fortunately, Cupertino has done well. We've got a pretty good jobs-to-housing, we've got an enviable jobs-to-housing balance. Recently, we celebrated the opening of the veranda, 100% BMR units for seniors. This is a net reduction of the jobs-housing imbalance and badly-needed BMR housing. Congratulations. In the current housing cycle, RENA is allocated plus 30% and there's even a backup plan in case housing is not allocated at one of the chosen sites. Unfortunately, the owners are not building and, you know, what can you do? You make it ready for them to build. If they choose not to build, that's their choice, it's not the city's choice. Nevertheless, some will exploit this crisis for their personal gain and to the detriment of those who need affordable housing. There's billions to be made in office and market-rate housing. If you don't give the developers exactly what they want, you're the bad guys. Well, not everybody believes that. In fact, the people that elected three council members last fall with an overwhelming mandate, two of whom got the highest vote totals ever in Cupertino history, and one who was relatively unknown relative to two former city mayors who were both defeated, and one sitting council member. So that's an amazing mandate to do what the people know that you know is right. Please, we entrust you to be champions of sustainable growth and municipal democracy. Good luck.
Okay, thank you, Eric. And that concludes oral communications unless there's any more cards.
So there was a request to remove Item 11 should the City Attorney address that legality of the item?
I don't think it's necessary, but if she wishes to, she may.
It's legal.
Okay, thank you. Oh, welcome. I may have missed it. Come up, you're welcome to come up and speak. Oh, oh, you're right, you wrote that you wanted to speak on Item 11, not during oral communications.
Oh, I see.
Oh, and somewhere else it says oral and crossed out, so, yeah, you'll have your opportunity when we get to Item 11. Thank you. So you can have that back for now. Okay, we are on to reports by council and staff. This is only about reports for our committee assignments, so we can start with Councilman Willie.
No committee assignment meeting this period.
Okay. Darcy?
Same, I have no committee assignments in the last two weeks.
Okay, I attended the VTA PAC as the alternate. They discussed the grants available for bicycling, they did some discussion of the route changes coming to VTA which are not beneficial. Some of them, actually one of them is beneficial to us, the 523 continuing on to the Sunnyvale Cal train. We are losing the Route 81 which goes from Wolf and Stevens Creek over to the Santa Clara Cal train station where you get the VTA flyer to the airport. I also, I think I already reported last time on the airport noise, so I think that's all I have for committee assignments.
The Economic Development Committee meeting was canceled last week, so I have nothing to report.
Oh, okay. Okay, Rod?
Yeah, so we had a Cities Association meeting. We invited Senator Bob Wykowski. There are various views on ADUs in our association. His bill, SB 13, seems like it is going to pass, which will take away our right to do things that, you know, I've talked about from this dais such as giving some incentive to put an ADU unit in the BMR stock, but with little opposition, it seems likely to go through, which would inhibit cities, all cities in the state, from, for example, putting impact fees on structures that are less than 750 square feet. And we currently, in this city, the biggest thing we have is park dedication fee, which is substantial. So we had that discussion with him and he was eager to talk about environmental things instead, frankly. I've also, as we discussed at the end of last meeting, been working with other cities on a response to the grand jury report on VTA. And we had a subcommittee meeting today and there was a lot of love for the idea that we ought to share our best points, draft letters, and so forth. And so communication has gone out to various city managers and staff that are working toward a VTA response. Many cities will be taking this up the same night we will on the 3rd of September. Palo Alto has already authored a very strong letter, which I think many cities will consider reinforcing. And, you know, these are all around the governance issues with VTA and the results that have been achieved. And for the public or council members, it is, it's a very well-crafted document and I look forward to our discussion after Darcy and I go through our draft and make a recommendation to you in our September 3 meeting. Thank you.
Great. Oh, I forgot to mention that the Vice Mayor, myself, the City Manager, and Katie Numura traveled to Sacramento last Tuesday. We met with our Senator Jim Bell. We met with Senator Scott Weiner. We also met with, who was the, oh, Mark Berman, who is the Assemblyperson for a small part of Cupertino up near Los Altos. And we met with staff members of some other legislators. We discussed Cupertino and housing, what we've done in terms of RENA, the issues we have with trying to get those that have had allocations from RENA given to them, trying to get them to actually build that housing that they've been allocated. I'm not sure that, you know, our requests for laws that would help compel that housing to be built will ever be introduced or go anywhere, but it was, it was still good to at least try to get the facts out to some of our state legislators. Do you have anything to add, Leon? About our visit? No? Okay. Deb, anything?
I thought it was a productive visit, just the one of many.
Right. I believe this is the first time we've had a Legislative Advocacy Day for the city. I really thank our new City Manager and Katie Numura for organizing this whole thing. It was extremely well-done. So that ends the...
So I guess I should thank the lobbyists, Casey and Alex, they have arranged all the schedule for us. I think it's also important for us to build, because legislators don't know much about Cupertino, so we are hoping to give them a chance so that they have a contact person in the future, they can contact City Manager in case they need more information about Cupertino. For example, we actually have built 250 units of housing since 2014 and we approved more than 1,000 besides Valco in the housing element. And all these projects were approved without much opposition and all the legislators need to know that so that they don't only receive information from the media.
Great. So now we are on to consent calendar. I have Item 4 pulled and Item 8 pulled. Does any council member or member of the public wish to pull any of the other consent Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the consent calendar other than Items 4 and 8?
I'll second it.
No one, no one made the motion yet, so...
Make the motion, John. I'll second it.
Okay, I'll, motion to pull 4 and 8.
And approve...
All the rest.
Right.
The rest, 2 through 9, accepting 4 and 8, right?
Right, 2 through 9, accepting 4 and 8. Okay, second, okay, and vote.
Carries unanimously.
Okay, so I have one card on Item 4 and do we have a staff report on this?
I don't have a staff, I mean, I don't have a presentation prepared, but I can give you a brief overview of what the staff report is about.
All right, and I don't know if you saw the written communication that was given to us as well regarding this. Probably not, you didn't get that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the reasons why this is coming to council this evening is, really the catalyst was the passing of the Clean Water Storm Ballot Initiative. And as council knows, we have a joint use agreement with CUSD where we are maintaining approximately 46 acres of sport fields, nine sport fields throughout the city, where we perform the maintenance and then our residents are able to enjoy hours after school to use these sport fields. And through our Storm Ballot Initiative, we had recommended and council had agreed that reimbursing the CUSD for the new clean water fees would be appropriate because we're responsible for the maintenance and our residents are able to enjoy those fields. So what this staff report does is it amends the existing joint use agreement to reimburse CUSD those, the amount for the first year, which is about $8,500, and then it would continue on in perpetuity as well. And then because we are looking at the agreement, CUSD had asked that one other provision be amended, and that was in Section 5, which extended the hours of Kennedy and Hyde Middle Schools Monday through Thursday. Originally, it had been to 4:00 p.m. and they asked it to go to 5:00 p.m. And we had checked in with our Rec. Communication, Rec. and Parks Department and we didn't have any issues with that, so that's really only two changes in the agreement.
Okay, and I have one card from Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Sharf, council members, staff. Tonight, you are revisiting, updating the joint use agreement with CUSD. And again, Lawson Middle School and Sedgwick Elementary are not on the list in this joint agreement. These two schools are on the east side of town and would increase the parks acreage for the east side and guarantee access to the residents, and yet they're not on here. This is not the first time I've brought this up. Lawson Middle School was on the list when it was called Collins. And after our tax dollars paid for the remodel, it disappeared. I've heard the reason that CUSD does not want Lawson listed on the joint agreement is that their maintenance union is concerned about loss of work. Solution: Let them continue to maintain it. Put it in the contract. I've heard also that CUSD does not want the Lawson Field Schedule allocated for sports teams. Solution: Put it in the contract that the field won't be available. The important thing is that Lawson Middle School, for example, is our only park. We, the residents in the neighborhood, had to fight to reopen the lock gates to provide access after they remodeled the school. We used their track to walk, run, learn to ride a bike, practice soccer with parents. Kids, adults use the tennis courts and the basketball hoops. Please make an extra effort to put these two schools on the list. We do, why do these two schools continue to be left out? Why are our neighborhoods left out of this park agreement? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. I have one more card that came in, Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi. So I'm glad Peggy reminded me of that item. I agree with everything she said and I remember a discussion that there was direction from council or Parks and Rec or all of the above to have conversations with CUSD about this and get all the schools on board. And I'm wondering if that did happen and if it did, what the answers were. I know there's two-by-two meetings with Vice Mayor Chow and Councilman Willie with CUSD, but the last meeting, I believe, was canceled in July and I don't know if there's been one rescheduled. I've been asking because I think that was a discussion that was started there as well. And it really needs to happen for all the reasons that Peggy said and more. So she's not speaking just for herself, I promise you that.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I wonder what happened because those, it is true that for Sedgwick, there's no other park there other than the small Barnhart and for Lawson Middle, there's no park in that section of town, so why were we not able to get those included?
Yeah, they have been desired locations to add to the joint use agreement for quite some time now. I recall in November of 2016 when we extended the agreement then... I recall in November of 2016, when we extended the agreement then, we were discussing Lawson Middle School, and that was prior to CSUD acquiring more property at Sedgwick. As we've talked to CSUD about this, which we, which we have in this current amendment, the, the conversations just haven't developed to the point where CSUD wants to add them at this time. But, but we know that it's desired on the city, and we bring that point up every time we can.
Okay. So, first, it's CUSD, not CSUD.
Sorry.
But, so what is their response about Lawson? They just have some reason they don't want it, other than the maintenance? Or is the maintenance-
Well, I mean, they, they have brought, brought up, in terms of their, their, their labor agreements and removing those maintenance responsibilities from them. That, that's come up. It, it just hasn't been something they've wanted to get into the agreement to date.
Right. But they, Peggy's suggestion was let them continue to maintain it, and then-
But that could be something we could do, then.
So, I guess they pay us if we maintain it, and they don't wanna, they don't wanna do that, right? So-
Is that the issue? It's been three years. So, what are the issues, the reasons that they have given? Is that really the reason they are giving this, or not?
That's, that's the only issue that, that has been told to me. Perhaps the Director of Park and Recreation has had other discussions, but that's, that's what I know.
So, the issue you know is the labor agreement issue?
Yes.
So, then there has been no, when have we met with them last time to try and find other options?
I know. I, I met with them a few times on this issue, and through email brought up, Sedgwick specifically. I'm, I don't know when Director Milk's may have met with him. I know that he meets with them pretty routinely.
So, can we get the City Manager to meet with Dr. Baker, maybe, and discuss this?
Yeah.
And elevate it? Because, yeah, it shouldn't take, shouldn't really be this difficult, but-
Well, yeah, I, I did see this as an opportunity to, to fold those sites in, and it was, it was inquired into, and it just didn't work out with a timeline for this.
May I make a motion at this time?
Sure.
Can I add more questions just a minute? So, the, does the fee waiver include those two sites that are not included in the joint agreement?
No.
So, we are now waiving fees for Lawson and Sedgwick, because they are not in the agreement, so they won't be paying storm drain fees-
That's correct.
-for those. And we are now waiving fees for Fremont Union High School campus, because we don't have joint agreement with them either.
We are not waiving those fees.
Okay.
Okay. Darcy, do you-
So, is there a deadline that we have to sign this agreement so they can get the fee waiver? Can we not sign it today, and so that give us a reason to, to bring them to the table?
Yeah, it, it isn't a waiver. It's a reimbursement of, of the fee. So, I think it's important to make that point. Yeah, they'll, they'll be getting this, this new fee with the, well, they're gonna be billed directly from us, because they don't get billed by the county assessors. So, that'll be coming out yet this calendar year. It's your discretion as to what you wanna do.
So, it won't, they won't be billed until December?
Yeah, I'd have to check with our finance. I mean, I know typically it's in October, November, when people get their property tax bills. So, it'll probably be around that time when they get it from the city.
So, maybe we have time to bring it back after the City Manager can meet with the school superintendent, I mean, the district superintendent.
I think we can do that near term.
Okay.
So, what are you suggesting? Do you not wanna move this item tonight?
Yeah, that's-
No, I would like to move it tonight.
Can we table it?
And we can come back and do another one for the other schools.
I mean, honestly, this isn't gonna be a compelling reason. A typical school here is, is getting a rebate of, what, $600-something more or less, depending on size. So, I don't think, you know, this is not gonna be a compelling thing. I think what's gonna have to happen is school board members and the superintendent are gonna have to work out a deal, apparently, with the unions there. And then at that point, right, there, there could be agreement. But nothing we're going to do is going to, to force them or compel them to participate if they don't want to.
Yeah, I, I would not wanna put it off. I mean, I think it's better to do this, you know, it's goodwill, and then work on trying to get those other two schools, if possible. There may be hidden reasons here that we, we don't know.
So, I would, I would move Item 4-
Well, I'd like to make the motion, since I asked for-
Oh, good.
Yeah. I would like to move that the City Council authorize, well, first, authorize the City Manager to execute an updated joint use agreement between the City of Cupertino and CUSD. Second, authorize expenditures in the amount of $8,705.80 from the non-point source fund to reimburse CUSD for clean water and storm protection fees associated with direction, with certain open space areas within specific school sites. And third, provide direction to our city staff and the City Manager to approach the CUSD administration and its superintendent regarding the subsequent inclusion of Lawson Middle School and Sedgwick Elementary School properties in the joint use agreement.
Second.
Okay, vote.
Oops. I'm so sorry. Let's start that again.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So, Consent Item 8, the City Attorney had me pull this, because it's, we need to consider the Item 8 that's on the agenda as well as an amended recommended action. Did everyone get a copy of this, or just me?
It was just a recommendation to read the following action, which I can do for you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So, I apologize for the late amendment. This is to add a CEQA exemption finding to the recommended action. This is, exemptions are not required to be expressed in your actions, but it turns out, we, staff discovered that there's a Bay Area Quality Management District grant application for this project that staff would like to apply for, that does require a CEQA finding. So, I would recommend that you move to recommend the action to authorize the City Manager to execute an agreement as stated in the agenda, and then to take the additional motions to find that the approval to execute the agreement with Nomad Travel LLC via Transportation, Inc. for the 18-month on-demand community shuttle pilot program is statutory exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 21080B10, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption, further finding that the approval is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Chapter 3, Article 5, Section 15061B3, because it is certain that there is no possibility that this approval would have a significant effect on the environment.
Okay. Do we know how much that grant would be if we got it?
We're applying for 1.5 million. That's the maximum amount.
Oh, wow. That would be great, if we could, huh?
I, I know that other communities have gotten very substantial grants. I don't know how much it would be for the city, but I would think that anything would be a welcome addition to our pot.
I will say that Director Lee had an additional comment to make.
Okay.
Actually, I can go ahead and make that comment. I'll keep it really brief. There isn't really a staff report. I just wanted to let council know that by, with this approval, it kicks off the pre-launch planning phase of the shuttle, and we will be working with VIA and experts at VIA on promotions of the system and reporting back to council with, with updates in the coming weeks with more information. We'll know more when we order the vehicles about the actual launch date, and we'll be reporting back.
Okay, great.
So, can you comment why the name of the company is changed to Nomad Transit, not VIA?
It's the holding, the parent company is called Nomad Transit LLC, but VIA is the, the company.
Okay. And can you comment about the pricing structure that you are considering? Would that come to the council for approval?
Well, that's not on the agenda here. The pricing structure's not on the agenda, so we can't really talk about that now.
I, I can mention that the pricing, pricing structure was already approved at the last council meeting, but we will be working during the pre-launch phase with VIA to discuss fares, weekly passes, monthly passes, and discounted rates. And we'll report back to council when we have a, have several meetings with VIA to work with experts in the field to get the best cost recovery possible for the city.
Oh, so those are not part of the agreement?
No.
Okay. So, somebody wanna make a motion for Item 8?
I would move Item 8 with the, the CEQA exemption, and I'm very excited about this. I think that we have an opportunity here to, to try something new. I know we have skeptics that say we can just take Uber and Lyft, but there are a number of circumstances where you can't. If you want to get your kid, a minor around town without you present, you can't do that with Uber and Lyft. We know there are folks with wheelchairs. We know there are seniors. The extension of this service is outlined in the staff report to El Camino Hospital and to Pamphon Mountain View and to the Caltrain Station, I think could be great additions in, in addition to contiguous Cupertino. I know there are other cities who have said, hey, we wanna join in on this. So, we may, we may have started something. And frankly, given the dearth of resources VTA is devoting to our area, Mayor Scharf talked about this a little earlier in his report on VTA. I think this is a good step forward.
All right. So, you made the motion, is-
Agreed. I'll, I'll second. And I would like to encourage staff to make sure that this rolls out as quickly and as efficaciously as possible, and also to ensure that we have a significant rollout with regard to not just the PR, but the outreach to our community, making everyone aware that this is available.
Incentive, yeah.
Yeah, so they do carry bikes also, so, which is what Uber and Lyft would then offer. Although I do, am still concerned that we are subsidizing $12 per ride.
Okay, that, we're not discussing that here now. Okay, can you vote with your lights?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to second reading of ordinances. Item 10. Second reading of ordinance 19-2186, approving a development agreement between the City of Cupertino and Cupertino Village LP for the Cupertino Village Hotel Project located at 10801 and 10805 North Wolf Road. Assessor parcel number 31645017 and 31605056. The recommended action, conduct the second reading of the ordinance. An ordinance for the City Council of the City of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new five-story, 185-room hotel with associated site and landscaping improvements, located at 10801 and 10805 North Wolf Road. I won't read the parcel numbers again. Okay, so do we have a staff report? I don't think we really need a staff report.
There is a card in front of you for-
Right. Oh, okay, sorry. We have one, one card here. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Hi, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin. And I am very, very glad that this is going to be a wonderful hotel. It, you could not get a better area, except that if you were outside of Monaco and were running a, like a, I don't know, James Bond thing. I mean, this is as good as it gets in Cupertino. They're across from the Apple Tree campus. They're at a historically relevant shopping center. You have the Duke of Edinburgh, which is one of the most sought-after. People return to come back to the Duke. It has a long history, storied history with Hewlett Packard. Get some of the HP people to tell you the story sometime. I think that this is going to be a really, really great outfit. I think that this type of a hotel is what puts Cupertino on the map. This is going to be a destination hotel. I will say again, it is as good as it gets. You don't have any better real estate location in Cupertino. I am very, very pleased that there has been a promise to keep as many of the ashes on Wolf Road. That is one of my favorite areas. The trees are big, the grass is green, the Duke is in the area. So, I'm really, really pleased that there has been so much attention to detail. They have talked to Apple, they've talked to the public. I, I like the fact that the entrance to the hotel is not on, like, it's not coming right in through the middle of the trees, destroying all the trees. They're coming in over an existing road network, where they're coming in through the cul-de-sac to the left, and then I believe you all are working out the drive aisle on the right. I think they're protecting even the redwood tree that's on the property. I will say again, it's as good as it gets. We are expecting it to be as good as they promised, and even more. I think that this is a very, very important project for Cupertino. Of course, we're gonna have a lot of potential celebrities staying there. You never know. Movie stars, who knows? We have lots and lots of tour buses that go up and down Tantau. I don't know if people realize that, but they go up and down Tantau and Homestead. We go down there every Sunday, and there is so much action down Tantau. I won't say why. You just go there and find out. But I'm hoping that some of the celebrities that stay at this wonderful hotel will go down Tantau and take pictures. Anyway, good luck, and let's just blow the lid off of it. It does not get any better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, I heard there is an attraction on Tantau. I think it's, it's some big fruit company that I read about. So, we have Item 11, which is-
Would you like me to do the second reading?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
So, I'd like to commend Kimco Realty for complying with the general plan, so that makes the approval process a lot easier, and especially the staff, the, the planning staff who are for working with Kimco to really deliver a really good project. And they are not just following the minimum of the, the general plan or the standard. They went about beyond to, to, to deliver such a beautiful site. Thank you.
Okay. So, you wanna conduct the second reading?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 19-2186. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino approving a development agreement for the development of a new five-story, 185-room hotel with associated site and landscaping improvements, located at 10801 and 10805 North Wolf Road, APN 31645017 and 31605056.
Okay. So, can I have a motion here?
I move that ordinance number 19-2186 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Okay, second?
Second.
I already seconded. You can third. Vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now-
We need to vote to enact the ordinance.
Oh, we have to, oh, a second. Okay.
I move that ordinance number 19-2186 be enacted.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now can I move forward? Because Item 11 will take, is, has two hours allocated, and Items 12 and 13 only have 10 minutes and 15 minutes, I would propose that we do Items 12 and 13 first. What's the procedure for?
Just a motion and a second.
Okay. So, should we vote with our lights?
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
What is happening? Um, let's do it. I've done, something happened. Let's do a voice, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Any, no, opposed? No. Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So, now we are on to Item 12. Establish a residential clean water rebate program offering various financial incentives to decrease stormwater runoff and establish a 20% cost share on clean water and storm protection fees for extremely low and very low-income property owners. Authorize an expenditure not to exceed $25,000 per year from the environmental management Clean Creeks Fund to A, fund the Santa Clara Valley, fund the Santa Clara Valley Water District's rain water capture program to match rebates for rain barrels, cisterns, and rain garden construction for Cupertino residential property owners offered through the Santa Clara Valley Water District's new program, and B, to fund a separate city program that would provide property owners up to $3 per square foot of impervious surface removed and replaced with pervious hardscape. And adopt resolution number 19111 to approve a budget allowance in the amount of $25,000 in the non-point source fund for the Santa Clara Valley Water District's rainwater capture program and the new impervious pavement conversion rebate pilot program 23081802, and authorize a 20% cost share of clean water and storm protection fees for extremely low and very low income property owners. And four, authorize expenditures not to exceed $14,000 per year from the non-point source fund for a 20% cost share of the 2019 clean water and storm protection fee for extremely low and very low income property owners. Uh, item 23081802, so do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening again, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. I appreciate you taking this item now. Um, so yes, this is for our proposed residential rebate and low-income cost share program. And, and similar to the, uh, the CUSD, Joint Use Agreement Amendment, um, this is, um, really an outcome of our successful stormwater ballot initiative from, uh, from last month. Um, and if you recall, when we were doing our, um, our outreach on that and, and different conversations with council, we, we'd indicated a, a desire to, um, have a rebate to, uh, conscious residents that tried to, uh, reduce the amount of, uh, of imperviousness on their property and to collect and treat more stormwater on their site. Um, so, and what this, what this is, is, um, we have an, an existing, uh, program that was established just a month or two with, uh, with Valley Water, and it's called the Rainwater Capture Program. And in this program, rain barrels are, um, currently funded, uh, through Valley Water at $35 each, uh, cisterns at, at $0.50 a gallon, rain gardens about a dollar a square foot, up to $300 maximum. And what we're proposing is, is we, we partner with that existing agreement. It would be administered through Valley Water. And, uh, we would, we would double that contr, that contribution, so rain barrels would be 70 and, and dollars and so on. And these would come from our new stormwater fees. And so that is an appropriate allocation of those funds. It was part of the fee report, um, that substantiated that new $44.42 residential typical fee. And then complementing that, we would have an impervious hardscape program as well. And this would be also, this would be funded from the city, and it would fund $3 a square foot, up to $900 per site. Uh, Palo Alto already has a program established that is similar to this. Um, they're funding a dollar and a half a square foot, up to $1,000 per site. We've, in our research, we've, we've learned that Palo Alto's program hasn't been all that, altogether that well utilized. Uh, so over the last, um, I think nine years, only 45 homeowners have taken advantage of that program. And so we're looking at our program to be a, a one-year pilot.
How, how many did you say in Palo Alto?
Only 45 owners over the last, like, nine years.
Very low uptake despite even bigger rebates.
Uh, the, the, the maximum amount's larger, uh, because they go up to 1,000, uh, but they limit it to a dollar and a half a square foot. We're, we're going in at $3 a square foot.
Oh, I see, for the impervious.
Yes.
Do they have similar rain barrel, barrel and cistern programs?
I'm not, I'm not aware if they subscribe to the Valley Waters program or not.
Got it, thanks.
Perhaps they do.
So what's our maximum? You said Palo Alto is $1,000 maximum?
We're proposing $900 a, a site, this first year.
$900 a site?
Mm-hmm.
No, regardless, how big is the site?
Well, it, it's, well, it's $3 per square foot, so it's, so it's going to be limited to $300, or 300 square feet per site. Okay, so total rebate for all programs, the Valley Water program and ours will be capped at the $25,000 per year. That's what our fee report, that was an input into that. So that's, that's provided by, um, our new fees. Let's see, accordingly, okay, so the costs of these rebate programs are supported by the new fee and no, have no impact to the general fund. Okay, property owners that qualify, okay, so this now is on our low-income side cost share program. Property owners that would qualify, that qualify with variable income would apply initially, and then every two years thereafter with either their PG&E bill or proof of income. And so if you, if you recall, um, the, the new fee applies to all property owners. And as we were doing our outreach and we were hearing from the community, there was quite a bit of concern with, uh, with people on fixed income and the like about being able to afford that new fee. So, um, in our prior conversations with council, coming up with a, a cost share program was desired. And so what we're proposing here is, uh, the 20% cost share that you see here. And through our research, um, uh, for, with PG&E and, um, and the housing, um, urban development, that, uh, there's about 1,500-plus residents that, that are likely eligible. And if we have a 20%, uh, if we do that 20% cost share, and all those that eligible apply, it would have about a bottom-line impact of $14,000 a year. Um, but now this would be borne by the general fund, because we, we can't support it by the new clean water fee. Um, and so property owners on a fixed income that would take advantage of this would apply initially, and then every four years. So that wouldn't be annually, it would be every four years. And, um, and they would bring in their, either their PG&E bill that would show that they're, um, eligible for the, um, the federal poverty guideline number that would be shown on their PG&E bill, or they could show other proof of income. Um, and then, um, property owners who are, um, on a variable income would come in every two years to, to just prove, uh, their eligibility for the program. I think one, one thing that's important to, to note is administrative costs in this first year, um, because it will take outreach, uh, to get this all set up. We would use, um, all of our social media, um, avenues that we could. Uh, we even discussed, we likely would have history of, of property owners who, say, have owned their homes for 20 or 30 years. Um, and that might be good for them to just receive a direct mailing, uh, that they would be aware of this program, and that we could have some cost sharing involved there. But, uh, first-year administrative costs for this are estimated to be about $15,000 the first year. And then, and then thereafter, about $4,000 annually is what we're estimating. And we're, we're also working to get this set up online, so people can do it remotely. Um, but we also have to acknowledge that some, some folks that would qualify for this may not be tech savvy and may not use online services.
Right.
Yeah, all right. And then this is just the recommended action that, that the, the mayor read, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So what about a development like the Veranda, which is owned by charity? Well, you know, it's 100% affordable, but they would not qualify for this because it's not an owner-occupied, um, property, really?
Yeah, so this is to property owners, so it's not, not to renters. Um, now that, that development, because, um, they, it is a new development, they would have implemented, um, you know, the current stormwater controls. They, they likely are getting a discount because they've implemented those controls.
Okay.
Uh, as the property owner. And that's, that's a 20, that's a 20% discount that was also part of the fee report. So, so, so new developments that have implemented best management practices like swales and impervious services, they, they'll get that 20% discount.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
Yeah, um, and I don't know, do we have any cards on this? Would you like comments now?
No cards.
Okay, so, yeah, my concern about this is the overhead. Some years back, I was interested in, in the program that the city had with, um, the water district to convert sod to, um, drought-tolerant landscape. And the, the program was solonorous that I didn't use it, and I, there were a lot of other people who didn't. Do you know for this Valley Water program, how quickly somebody could actually take action and get something done? Do we know what the process is? I mean, for all the money we're putting in here, I've not seen Valley Water actually administer programs effectively. And I think their uptake rate, you talk to landscapers and gardeners, they say, forget it, right?
Yeah.
By the time you get an answer from them, two seasons might have passed.
I think it's a good, it is a good question. Um, this is a new program with us and Valley Water. Um, I know we're going to do significant outreach to make sure that, um, everyone's aware that program exists, and we'll, and we'll be doubling it up. So, you know, the, the incentives are there. And if we get the word out, we'll just see how well we can do this first year.
Well, I'd like to have some metric, uh, on this, on how effective this is, what the uptake rate is. And I'd like to hear, um, maybe mid-year, in six months, I'd like to hear either through items or as a council item, you know, whether this is actually being, whether we're spending our money here effectively. Because we do have an alternative, these programs. And that alternative is to invest in our infrastructure. And as I think you've well pointed out to us over time, we're going to continue to be expending money through the CIP from general funds to, uh, maintain the infrastructure. So, these are interesting programs. Um, so then I would like to turn specifically to this cost-sharing thing. $14,000 a year for an initial $15,000 administrative cost. And $4,000 after, a year after that, is that right?
That's what we estimate.
So I, I just, I'm having a hard time supporting this. Not because I think we shouldn't give a break to low and very low-income folks, but just because the, the administration cost of this is so high and the, the relative value, 14,000 a year, if everybody took it. Let's say that 10 or 15% of folks take it. You know, you're still, you, you're providing very little benefit for a lot of overhead. So, you know, my suggestion to you that I, I made this morning when we, we met, um, was to see if we could make a deal with PG&E to get the list of folks who qualify under their program and see if we could automatically apply it without having to have people come in and qualify and thereby reduce our costs. And I know you're interested in maybe hitting a higher income level, but frankly, for my money, I'd rather take that marketing money and spend it on, um, you know, improvements to the infrastructure. If, if our costs to administer these things are so high, I don't, I think we're.
So why is it so high?
Investing a lot. Well, it's, you know, it's marketing, right? You have to, you have to go and get people, people's attention who are busy, maybe working two to three jobs just to make ends meet, or are impoverished and can't get down to City Hall perhaps, because they're seniors. And then you, you're going to have some of them who can't get online. Okay, fine, we can give them the opportunity to get online, but they may not have the capability to do that. And we're, we're going to be spending a lot of money, right, to, to get a person, a few people down to City Hall every year. So that's my concern about it.
Yeah, and, and the 15,000 admin costs, that, that's assuming all, all, um, 1,565 have applied. And we, and we allocate, say, 10 or 15 minutes per applicant. That, that's where the number came from.
Right, so that's not even realistic, based on Palo Alto.
You'll be lucky to get 10.
May have 50 people applying.
Yeah, so, so, right, so the number I gave you was at, by far at the high end. And, and if we have less participation, then our admin costs would be proportionally less.
Help me understand, how would, uh, how are you? So you are going to look at their, so PG&E already has a list of, they are, they identified as low-income and very low-income, um, in their bills?
Yeah, they, they prescribe to the federal poverty guidelines. Um, those numbers were in the staff report, but, uh, yeah, so they.
How do people get that status? They have to prove their income to PG&E annually?
Yeah.
That's right.
PG&E does these bill inserts, right? That you may have seen, right? Uh, it's called the PACE program, I think, or, no, it's not, it's, um.
It's a, it's a program with a catchy name.
They spend a lot of money on marketing, because they happen to be sending you something anyway. But because of the way they work with the PUC, um, they're allowed to take all the costs associated with the, those inserts and charge everybody.
Hmm.
The question is whether we ought to be in that business or whether we could simply, basically, uh, track PG&E with some more automatic process that wouldn't require people to come in and make a separate application to the city of Cupertino.
So you say about 1,500 residents are likely eligible. This is from the PG&E number?
The PG&E number for the federal poverty guidelines was like 965. The, um, the number for the, the HUD number, Housing Urban Development number, for low and extremely low was, was 15, 1,565, I believe.
So about 1,500 property owners in Cupertino qualify for low income?
Yeah, and that was based off of the 2010 census.
Okay, so if we just give them this 20% discount, what would be our estimated cost to this? $14,000 would be. It's, I thought 14,000 is estimating the, the number would, who would apply, which won't be all of them.
No.
14,000 is if all of them apply.
That's right. Yeah, if you, if you took the, the 1565, and it's $44.42 a year, and just multiply those two numbers, and then it then took 20% of that, that's where the 14,000 comes from.
Okay, so it's only 14,000 a year if we do an automatic, uh, cost share to all low-income PG&E customers?
But that's, that's to, to the extremely low and low. Yes, we're going above the federal poverty guidelines.
I'm sorry, it's the CARE program, C-A-R-E, all caps.
So, so that 15,000, you know, while it could be the maximum, it's not really a real number, because so few would actually apply. So I wouldn't vote against it based on the potential for 15,000, because it's likely to be more like 2,000.
No, the, the question is whether you want public dollars going to a program that has so little real impact. Or is there a way to automate this, so we could get PG, make a deal with PG&E, get their list and automatically apply it without having this heavy administrative cost?
Well, it would cost more if we automatic apply it, automatically apply it, because then even the people that didn't want it would be getting it.
But then we're getting some real impact.
The people who are getting it are the ones who are getting a discount from PG&E, because they are low-income and extremely low-income anyway. Right, so.
And, and as a reminder, that this is a, it is set up to be a one-year pilot program. And I, and I do think Councilman Seeks has a, has a very good point. We've, we really want to report back on the efficiency and, and determine if it makes sense to continue with it. And there could be other, better ways to use those dollars.
They'd be getting hot.
But, but I think in the, but I, I do know, just because I was attending all those community meetings on the stormwater ballot initiative, that, uh, you know, we had made statements that we are going to have a cost share program.
Right, that's why, I mean, even though it's such a small amount, we did say.
We, we did.
We were going to do that, so we should do that.
And it was all part of, you know, the, um, the education of, of the initiative. So I, you know, I'm, I mean, I am inclined to, you know, follow through on.
Right, and some people may have voted for it because of, you know.
That's something to consider.
Just to be clear, I'm not arguing we shouldn't have the program. I'm arguing about how we should administer it.
I'd like to move the item as, um, described by, um, the mayor and his introduction to it, uh, with the, um, direction of staff to keep track of the administrative hours required and, of course, to report back to us, because this is a trial period, um, at a point when we can tailor the administration of it to perhaps something more fitting, given our experience in the upcoming year.
Um, actually, can I move to support Rod's idea of automatic, um, collection? Because the first year's cost would be already 15,000 to administer it. And so why, and then, and then what we are talking about, these are fees that we are collecting, the city are collecting anyway. So, yeah, it's, I don't know why this is, has to come out of the general fund, but then we are collecting extra fees from the storm drain, um, ballot major already.
Well, let me, let me try this. Obviously, I just tested staff on this this morning when, when I read through this, uh, and, and talked to, talked to them about all this. What we're talking about is rebating, what is it, a $48 fee? The full fee is $48.
$44.42.
And so somebody who would apply, come down to City Hall, instead of paying $48 a year after going through some process with us, would be paying only $44.20?
Well, it'd be 20% less, it'd probably be like around $38.
$38, all right? So now you tell me, if that's worth the time of your staff, is it worth the time of that person? Uh, what I'd like you to entertain is just the idea that if it's possible to, to take advantage of PG&E's database and apply this automatically, that we do that, as opposed to doing our own process. That's all I would ask.
And every two years.
And if not, then fine, we, we promised folks.
And every two years they have to come back again to reapply, re-qualify, and four years.
It's going to be really complex to administer.
We will be checking their income every two or three years. So for that $10 discount?
Well, that, that's how it's set up. I mean, you, you could have us just check every four years. I mean, it is a one-year pilot, but we, we could make adjustments to it. I, now to, to Councilman Seeks' point, uh, PG&E will, will not share their list, and we can't unfortunately make things automatic.
We can't. How, so how did you get this number of 1,500? You got it from PG&E, right?
We did, and. We did, and it's because somebody knew somebody.
Right, they gave us the number, but they're not giving us the names and addresses.
We do not.
No, no.
So we cannot get, so we cannot even get them at all?
No.
No.
So, I mean, my feeling is we promised this, we should do this.
I hear you.
So I made a motion.
Okay, I'll second your motion. Vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. We are on to item thirteen, amendment to the fiscal year 2019 to 2020, City Council Work Program to Add a New Community Development Work Program Item Related to Increasing Noticing for Development Projects. Have the staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I don't actually have a slideshow for you, but, but this item is, came from your July sixteenth hearing where Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie requested that this item be placed on the future agenda to consider increasing the noticing radius as well as the time period for development projects. So what this item is doing is asking for you to consider placing, to modify the Community Development's Work Program to incorporate this item. With it, we're also requesting for a couple of items to come off in order for us to adequately assign resources to accommodate this particular project. So, I'm available for any questions, but.
So what would come off?
Sure, we, there are two items. One is comparative studies that compares standards for mixed-use developments and high-density residential guidelines with other cities. And the second item is development accountability. So these are also attached in the staff report for you to review.
Okay.
It sounds to me this item should be part of that comparative study because we are, should in a way be comparing our notification radius?
So, the item for the comparative study is to compare standards for, sort of like objective standards, design standards for mixed-use developments and higher-density projects, so it's a little bit different. If you want to incorporate that into that project, we can do that, but that'll be a longer time period, we won't be able to get to it as quickly.
To include the consideration to increase the radius is taking so much, would take so much time. Right now it's three hundred feet, we might be increasing to five hundred or more?
At a minimum of five hundred, right, so that would be.
Why would that be taking so much time?
Because we'll want to be able to look, look at what the industry standard is, to look at if there is a room to increase from three hundred to five hundred, if not more, three thousand citywide. If so, what type of project, what's the threshold for that? So that requires a little bit of time to evaluate and to assign resources. I mean, the Community Development Department consists of planning, building, housing, coenforcement, and we currently only have five planners, so we have a lot of items in the work program that we need to accomplish in the next six to nine months.
Well, can you, can we get a commitment from you, because you don't actually identify a number of hours that you believe that this would take. However, in the amended work plan, the items are each about a hundred hours estimated. Could we get a commitment from you and your department that if there are extra hours, you know, as you're anticipating the work, that you go back to these items and, and pick them back up?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, the idea is not to just drop them and not to review them at all. The idea is to show, as you see in the, in the cross-out section, is to show that those items will be, the intent really, I should have made that clear, is to, to act on this particular project first. Obviously, if we're able to move really quick on this, we'll put the other two back, obviously, yeah, we will do that.
So we are, we could put this on a backburner list for, so you mean we could add an item on a waitlist bucket?
You can, you can do that as well, yeah.
John, what do you feel?
I'm just a little bit wondering why we have to compare with other areas. Three hundred to five hundred, I mean, I would think that we as a city have our own discretion to say, hmm, five hundred, sounds good, that's the increment that, I'll let them finish.
So, so part of that, part of that also is whether we need to do outreach, noticing, and kind of take a look at what other cities in our region have done as a standard practice, right? To change something like this, yeah, it's just a policy, we can certainly change that, but we want to look at, is want to be consistent, and to see if that itself requires any notification or outreach.
Is, is that legally required when we increase the noticing radius to?
No.
To the, or the outreach?
No, it's not, but.
Because I think usually this might be even an administrative discretion, right? Administratively, we a lot of times do more than the code requires, so.
Can I make a recommendation? So, we could leave our municipal code to three hundred, at least three hundred, and start in practice trying a bigger radius depending upon development size or project size, and start from there.
So as part of the planning document, we would include that in our document to applicant, to say, please notify.
At least, yes.
So maybe that, but then we need to vote on that.
It's the city doing the noticing, right?
It depends, it's the city notification we're talking about versus a developer's own notification, for example.
The council doesn't need to vote on this, right? Because we can discuss.
You would have to vote if you want to actually change the municipal code, right, from three hundred to five hundred?
So now it's city manager's implementation.
You could.
Yeah.
I just, I have a question about this and wondered if, these fees we seek to recover through applicant's fees, correct?
Yes, most, most of those are covered by the applicant, as part of the project fees.
I mean, I could see doing something here that ensured we were consistent. I mean, honestly, I think, I'd certainly be willing to leave this up to the discretion of staff, but if we feel strongly about it, I'd, you know, rather than us trying to legislate this on a case-by-case basis, the alternative would be to, yeah, study what other jurisdictions are doing and bring it around when we do the fee schedule next year and bake it into fees if we think that there's more warranted, more radicing notice warranted based on, you know, application size. For a single-family home or a small complex, you think maybe three hundred would be okay? And then, you know, for really big projects, you could well understand that you may want to be citywide, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would want to put this on next year's work plan. I would not favor amending the current work plan, because I think those other items are important. So for the remainder of this fiscal year, leave it up to staff and then bring it back in the next work plan.
To, to try to get at the intent as it pertains to my thoughts, is that it's not intended for single-family residences. It's truly intended for projects that have significant impacts. And clearly, three-story, four-story, five-story, we've got, out of our jurisdiction, the Stern Hotel, that's gonna be six stories, one small step away from residential properties. And only telling three hundred feet, which is maybe six or seven or even eight houses, that there's gonna be a six-story hotel with, with customers, six floors in the air staring down into your backyard, your front yard, your kids are playing. So that's the intent, is the, the noticing area, I believe, was created in a time when these types of instances didn't exist. And so, I'm not suggesting that this be done, if somebody's gonna put a two-story house or a second story on their single-story house, we already have those in place. And their neighbors and their neighbor's neighbors are told, I get these things in the mail, when a neighbor several doors down is adding that second story, I get notification and I can come to the planning meeting where it's discussed. We're talking about the developments that have significant impacts, you know, and the residents should clearly be known or be told what's happening. And I'm concerned, you know, when we simply only jump from three hundred to five hundred, you know, five hundred, you know, what's that, ten or twelve houses? Next to, you know, a six-story-type building is still not sufficient, let alone the traffic impacts, that, the number of cars that would be going in and out of this six-story hotel when you have people trying to get home on their residential street. And so they should at least be able to find out about this and, and raise whatever concerns they might have. I'm definitely okay with jumping from three hundred to five hundred without a lot of study, and then we kind of see, gee whiz, did we get any pushback from anybody? And then in the work plan, I think we really need to come up with a, a rated noticing area. If it's gonna be three stories, it'd be, say, five hundred. If it's gonna be four stories, it's gonna be six hundred. If it's gonna be six stories, it's gonna be seven hundred. So that, you know, we truly are fair to the residents because these developments going forward are getting much, much more dense, much more tall. And I think we need to make sure that the residents are going to be better served. I still don't know that it would be sufficient, but better served than simply sticking to this old number of three hundred feet when you're talking about these large projects with significant impacts on, on the people that are nearby.
So can we leave it to staff for the rest of this fiscal year and then put it on the work plan with some standards for next year?
I'm good with that, and I'm, I think we could all support the idea that the bigger the project, the more,
Right.
More residents ought to be noticed, and I think there are projects for which we ought to notice the whole city.
Yeah, because the traffic impact would be affecting anyone.
Where the radius is less, isn't the thing, but it really is, has citywide impact, so, right?
So I would propose not amending the work plan and just leaving it to staff for the rest of the year and then putting it on the next year's work plan. Because we can't really keep modifying the work plan and adding more work without adding more full-time employees, which we don't really want to do.
So, can I clarify something still? The noticing we are talking about now is the noticing done by the city. We send out, after the development project is, the application is complete. But as I understand, like for the Westport project, they are noticing, they're, they would be doing by, on their own for the EIR scoping session, those things. So, would we, could we require those to have a wider radius also? Or is that legally, there is a legal minimum and we cannot require more?
So, so what this item is, this item is speaking about the city's notification process in terms of the voluntary notification process with applicants. We've always encouraged applicants to go much wider and longer than the three hundred-foot radius. In the Westport, as an example, they actually reach out to three thousand-foot radius. Whether that's sufficient or not, we should do more, obviously, we'll think about that, but this is just for the city.
So can we include, for the next year's item, include also notification done by the applicant? For, I don't know what, besides see what other purposes?
Well, I don't know, I think we'll have to consult with the attorney's office, because that's an entirely voluntary noticing process, not required by the project.
That will be part of the things we study next year.
Sure, we'll consider and study that, yep.
Okay, I do have one card on this item that just came in, Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I wasn't gonna talk on this item, but since the dreaded hotel has come up, I understand why we need to have wider noticing. I'm glad that John, Councilman John, had mentioned the dreaded hotel, which is on Stern. Because the reason why a lot of the people on the eastern side of Cupertino know about the urban villages in San Jose is that we had to go down to the San Jose City Council meetings and the Planning Commission meetings and the special meetings in the tower to find out what was going on with this hotel, the plans that were going on. And some of us actually found out because other residents sent us email, because San Jose initially was not doing a good job of notifying any of the neighbors. There was a woman who actually lives on Stern, who is very close to the project, and she was repeatedly not noticed by San Jose, and she was within two to three hundred feet of the project. So, yes, we have gotten to know a lot about the urban villages, they're in our face, they're part of our daily life. In this situation of however you decide to do noticing, you need to keep in mind that there are areas of the city that are on the border with other cities, and we live the drama of some of these projects every day. We are living the building of the second IHOP hotel, Blue Tower Cube, to be polite. We're living that with Santa Clara daily. If you know, IHOP is gone there, it's moved to West San Jose, and they're building the second, I guess it's, it's six stories. But we know the plans, we've already approved them, we looked over them, they have the permission to build, and we have already, the people on the east side went to the Santa Clara meetings, and we know what's being built there. The Stern Hotel, you had numerous residents from San Jose, Santa Clara, and West San Jose themselves that repeatedly went, made the drive to San Jose City Hall, went to community meetings to find out what was being built on our borders. I bet a lot of people in Cupertino do not realize that there is an urban village that San Jose can declare down Bollinger Road from Lawrence to Highway nine, and that is a San Jose urban village, which means that any of the retail along their side could be up to ten stories. And also, they are doing conversion of R1 housing along the urban village border to multi-story, multi-tenant. And that means that any of the R1 on the Bollinger side of San Jose could go to multifamily. We need to watch going on, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, that's all the cards I have. So it sounds like staff has direction on this. We will not amend the work plan at this time, okay? So we are done with item thirteen. Okay, we've been going for two hours now, so why don't we take, take five minutes and then come back at eight fifty-five and continue with the exciting item.